Okay, I want to call a meeting to order. Mallory tells me we don't no longer have to read Baker's virtual public meeting announcement. I will say this meeting is both hybrid and in-person. The, and I have to say, planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. And I'll call the meeting to order or declare a quorum present. We have John D'Amelia absent, right? But Bill Holman's next to me, Chris Monroe, Erica Deck, and myself here, and then Francois remotely here. So, the first thing is public comments, but if you are an agenda item, then we wait for that agenda item. I do have you as a separate agenda item. You folks are?
Tree.
Tree, yes, okay, that's an agenda item too. Anybody not on an agenda item?
You're here.
Okay, and Rebecca?
This is Jeff Ward.
Oh, Jeff, okay, great. Okay, so, next item on the agenda is minute approvals, and I sadly, Mallory had three sets ready and a computer crashed today, so we're going to take them up on the 15th. Upcoming events, I have none. Action items, the first action item is the Six Ragged Hill Road application. And that, this is a, it has to be a public hearing, which was advertised, right? So, I want to call that public hearing to order. The applicant is Gina Rude, that's you?
My mom. Gina's working.
Gina's working, okay, so who, who's here for the applicant? You are? Oh, did you say, just say your first name?
Ben.
Ben, okay, so we can talk, okay. And she filed a petition with us requesting to cut down three shade trees that are growing in the right-of-way, red oak trees and the right-of-way of Six Ragged Hill Road in front of her house. The reason for the request stated in the application was the trees hang over her house, and there was no plan submitted with this, right? Did you bring one by chance? Okay.
Which house is this?
Long Island Roadhouse.
Oh, okay.
Maybe, maybe you could copy it quickly.
Yeah, make a copy.
The picture, we can pass the picture, just make a copy of the plan. Because I want to put it with your application. So, while she's making that copy, Jeff, who's here, is our tree warden in town, and he submitted his report that these trees are red oaks, they are thirty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-seven inch in diameter, right? That's the diameter, that's what I was trying to, and they do lean towards the house. The hearing was advertised as required under our bylaw, orders were notified as required under the bylaw. So, I think, I thought this was kind of a novel issue, because usually when the petitions come to us, it's a, you know, it's removing for a driveway, it's something that fits within the criteria. So, I did prepare for the board, just, just sort of in the public, too. This is the, oh, great, thanks. Do we have?
Want me to make multiple for everyone, or?
Yeah. All right, you can pass it on, okay. Yep. And they're tagged, right? Okay.
That's upside down, sorry.
I just, I just wanted to, I have more copies of some of these, which are the, these. Oh, you have a copy, okay, it's in the pile on paper, because we were working soft for the last minute. You have something, it's titled, "Harrison General Bylaws, Chapter Thirty-two, adopted in two thousand and eighteen", which is not where it came from, but it is about scenic roads, and it has a list at the bottom that says, "Considerations for allowing public shade trees to be removed or walls", right? So, I just wanted to be, people to be aware of these considerations. So, it's more, more of, because as I say, it's kind of a novel situation, in that, obviously, with a driveway access in a vacant lot, you're going to allow, in the vacant lot. So, anyway, the things, and for the public as well, the criteria contribution of the trees or stone walls to scenic beauty, age and historic significant of the road, trees and walls, features of the road such as service pavement with bridges, D is public safety, local residential traffic patterns, and overall traffic volume. Anyway, you can go on. But these are the reasons, and if they don't fit within this criteria, or the tree isn't dead, generally, you wouldn't, dead or, you know, this also allows for applicants reasons and considerations. But if it doesn't fit into one of these criterias, generally, you wouldn't allow it, because it's a protected tree, and our, this is supposed to protect trees. So, having done that, looked at that, the question is, can we fit this in the criteria? And I'm happy to hear from you, and then I also sent this to Bill Murray, because I said, was there an angle at which a tree leans that causes it to be dangerous, is there, what's the criteria that would be dangerous? So, if you want to speak?
I'd be interested in having, hearing what Jeff has to say.
Yes, and Jeff, I have what Bill has to say, which I'm going to share with everybody as well, and I'm going to start, share it with the board, because it just came in today. Did that get you? What's in our package? It is there, okay.
John is on that.
Oh, John D'Amelia, okay, so you're going to reflect that in a minute, so our fifth member just joined virtually.
Hi, John.
John D'Amelia, yeah. Hi, John.
Hello.
Okay, so, anyway, generally, the way you do this is you let, you let the petitioner speak first, so tell us about these trees a little bit from your perspective.
They're close to the house, they're twenty feet to the house, they're leaning more than fifteen degrees. The roots are showing. They do have a V-shaped limb distribution. They are east leaning, which seems to, from all the research that we've done, present a greater likelihood of falling down to the house, because they're east leaning, and the wind comes from the west. They do have dead branches, we pick them up frequently. The fear is that, you know, it's heavily traffic, foot traffic, road, bicycles, dogs, kids, moms with strollers, you know, and you wonder if any of these falling branches could, could be a detriment to them. There are no hollowed areas. These are all the things that said that a tree should be removed. Roots are showing, which is a positive problem. It is a greater than fifteen-degree angle, and there are ends.
Okay, so, there's a lot, I do, I'll buy this too, and your picture, if you, did the pictures make it down? So, these are like three trees among seven to nine shade trees that are there. And it's only the three that lean towards the house that you want to remove, and they're marked, right? Okay, so?
Bill has his hands up, and then we're just going to ask the audience to talk a little louder, because I guess the mic isn't catching it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, how are we going to hear Bill?
As we can.
You may have to come up and sit at the table to hear Bill. So, Bill is our places associates, some places associates, he's our expert on this. So, and Jeff also has a report, so I'm putting them together. I asked the same question of Bill, is what are the, what are the standards in the industry? You know, are they leaning, are they whatever? And he put, he responded by putting together potential, a draft decision that we can consider, which the planning board has actually not had a chance to read, because it's very late, but it's not very long, so. Okay, Bill, do you want to speak first to your decision, and then I'll just read it? Or, well, Jeff, sure, he already put his report in writing, though, right? Yeah, go ahead, you go ahead.
So, in speaking to these trees, so?
Can you hear him, Bill? Go ahead.
We're talking about red oaks, a native tree, generally a strong tree. When I'm going to look at a tree as far as whether it should or shouldn't be removed, dead or dangerous are kind of where we're looking at. When we're looking at dangerous, we're going to assign hazard, and by performing tree risk audits. The trees structurally are pretty sound, they do have a lean, they are rather large, they do have a potential target. So, the likelihood of a failure in a tree like that is probably a low to medium chance of failure, but if there were a failure in those trees, the risk would be pretty high, in that they are very large and lean quite a bit on that house.
Destroy those.
So, it puts them kind of to a medium to high risk for failure, where there could be a substantial consequence.
Okay.
So, that would be my take on it, they are healthy trees, dead branches can be pruned out, or the trees can be preserved, they can be pruned back to take some weight off them. That would help mitigate that type of a hazard. But as far as, I think there are, like we said, what, seven or nine trees there, you were looking to take four of them out, the three town ones and the one that was clearly on the private property. So, it doesn't remove all the trees at the frontage. I'm a little split on this, I can make a case for making them go away, I can make a case for keeping them.
Okay. Does the, does the application say three trees or four trees?
It's for three town trees, and one with a private.
Oh, one with a private tree that we don't have jurisdiction over. Okay, so, I know Bill is there, but he was muted, are you unmuted? Can you unmute? He smiled.
I guess I was muted, yeah.
I don't know, can you hear me now? Okay, so, Bill, I could read your letter and see if the board agrees with it. Or if you want to address it first, you can.
I think if you can just read my comments, because, I mean, Jeff already addressed the, the status of the trees, and he's reiterated pretty much exactly what I've said.
Okay.
So, if you could just say one and two.
Okay, so, the board is supposed to issue a written decision on this, too. So, he's done this draft of decision, but basically, he, he goes, you know, he takes your diameters and so forth, and then he says, "In relation to the proposed removal, we offer the two following comments. One is the middle oak and the easternmost oak appear to be in good health and could likely remain, but should have some pruning of dead branches if they are to remain. The westernmost oak is leaning more significantly than the other two and only has top growth. It should be removed as being the least healthy and a potential threat to the existing structure." But then he says with the second paragraph, "It's this office's opinion that the removal of all three trees will not affect the, quote, scenic nature", which is one of the criteria, "of the street. These, these three marked trees are located on the lot side of the street, and there remain quite a few existing oak trees of lesser caliper to remain on the street side. Removing these trees will allow the smaller shade trees along Ragged Hill Road to have greater canopy exposure and likely increase their health and amenity along the road's edge." Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Statement, okay. So, we could add to this, we, this is a draft of the opinion, but I'm willing to add anything you would like to add to it, if the board agrees. So, we have a choice here, but it's, it's Bill's office opinion, having gone out and seen it, that you could remove all of these trees, the three in question that lean towards the house, and you still have the others remaining, and it wouldn't affect the scenic road, and it would remove the danger to the house.
I did go out and look at this, and I do agree, the three could be taken down, and the other trees are going to grow up. And the fact that the house is right there, that is a small house, if any one of those trees came down, it would destroy the house and the people in there. And I think with that in mind, you know, in air and safety, I think it's a good idea.
I also went out and looked at it, and the pictures don't really do it justice to how much they lean towards the house, and how the house is very much in kind of the kill zone.
Okay, okay.
Destruction.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you ready to vote? And are you have any questions, Francois?
No questions from my end.
Okay, because we have a big agenda, so?
I like the motion.
Okay, the motion to allow the removal of three trees?
Yes, with, I treat one's opinion, and also the places associates, I do agree with what he's stipulated in the paragraph, too.
And we will write a couple of the reasons in our letter to tie it into the bylaw. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from anybody?
Do we talk about cost on town property? Who bears that cost of removing?
To Jeff.
Even though it's on private, on town property.
This is your petition removing trees.
Right.
In most cases, the homeowner, you know, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but the right-of-way is a right-of-way, it isn't actually ownership of the fee under it. So, you may own the land subject to the right-of-way of the town over it.
It's unusual.
Is that, you understand? Okay, any further questions, any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, ready to vote? Lift on, I?
Bill Holman's eye.
Monroe, I.
I agree.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, so we thank you, we will put your plan with the application, and we'll get an opinion out, you know, a lot, a letter saying we've granted it within the next few days, right? She doesn't work on Friday, the town office, so it will be, it'll be at least Monday. All right, can you put on our to-do list?
Got it.
We thank you kindly.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you. You guys might be on the checklist. All right. Okay, the ne, the next, oh, I should have closed the public hearing before we voted. An error, but the public hearing is now closed, and we have voted. So, item B on the agenda was brought to my attention.
Is there anybody here for that? Can we jump, can we jump on all the people up here?
We, well, then, we can do it later. I want to do, all right, we'll postpone it, but I want to come back to it, okay?
No, yeah, let's come back to it, just take care of the folks that are here.
Okay, because Bill needs to talk to us about this.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
For a limited time. But it's all right, because the next issue involves him too, and actually, your issue involves him too. So, the next item, if we take that, if we take it out of order, is the A and R plan, which is for House Street Road, and you're here for that. And you're Mr. Gerard?
No.
You are?
Not giving.
Oh, oh, but with the engineering firm, or are you the resident?
I would perspective by the property, so we give it to House Street, the property.
Okay, all right. That's fine, okay, so background to the board here is, this plan came in, and I was like, kind of mystified, because I didn't understand what they were subdividing, right? But now I do understand.
This is the property that runs over the sixty-two. This runs to sixty-eight right here.
Sixty-eight.
It runs all the way through. Basically, what happened over the years, they subdivided this lot, this lot, and this lot. And when they did, the last lot, which I think was this one, they never tied them all together. So, this land remained limbo, but it was tough to convey, because it didn't have any meets and bounds or any definition. So, what this plan does is just solidifies the distances between lots in the area of the remaining properties that the Houthis have.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, okay, so, right, so, the question was, the question I asked to Bill, which is why I involved him, because usually we just do the checklist, was, if it's not, is it a subdivision plan if you're not subdividing anything? And the answer he gave me, he's here, but he also sent it to the board, he said that actually, this is correct. This is the way, you can do this, the courts have decided, you don't have to, first, for an A and R plan, you don't actually have to subdivide a lot, that the meets and bounds restrictions can be recorded. So, that was, that was the question. So, we can go ahead and sign this plan, I do want to tell the board, and I want to let Bill talk if he wants to, we do have an A and R checklist for plans, you know, that I always go through, and sometimes we go through it together, but in the interest of time tonight, if you don't mind, I will tell you, I've checked for all these twelve things, and they're all on that plan, the North points, but?
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, if you're willing to do that, Bill, is there anything else you, you want to add to that, since I sent it to you?
No, in the interest of keeping your meeting short, nope, nothing to add.
Okay, so we're going, you want to turn them around and line them up, and we'll sign them? Yeah, I will just come around, one after another.
Alice?
Well, Francois can do it remotely.
You guys need a vote to endorse.
Hang on, hang on. Just a second, because I can't.
You mean a motion and a vote to endorse.
Yeah.
Okay, we do, all right, we don't, we should, in addition to planning it, have a motion to endorse a subdivision plan?
I'll make a motion to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 John and Francois.
John and Francois.
I, I.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Bill.
Hi, Mark Demick.
How's it going?
Time to see.
See everybody here?
Oh, wow. It's all home today.
Trouble here, so don't yell at me.
We only need three signatures, I believe, right? Because that's our quorum. So, I don't think that, I'll just check that.
I think, are they in there? This is planning board.
We only need the three signatures, right, Bill? Bill?
Yes, just the majority.
Okay.
Um, peace.
You guys want to date it?
Oh, you date it for us, we date them all.
Eleven, four.
Do we keep one, that's what I was going to ask.
We do.
Okay, while she's dating them, board members, we do, I do want to pay Bill for his services reviewing this, it's actually a pretty novel issue that we needed help with. So, his fee for that is a hundred, he looked at it, and called me, and so on. He did talk to either you or Mr. Gerard, I don't know. One sixty-eight seventy-five, so I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, who's paying me the invoice or insulting on this?
I don't know.
No, we, no, no, we pay it, we'll pay it.
For his review.
For his review. Generally, we do pass things on, but in this case, we do have money for, like, we're lost, you know, it's a novel question. So, okay, so this is to be paid, the merchant would be to pay out of planning board funds.
Okay.
Any further discussion, anybody?
Bill and Joe, Francois and John.
Francois and John.
I couldn't hear you, can you repeat what you're saying?
Because this was a novel subdivision plan involving no actual division of land, I sent it to Bill to, to opine on whether we needed to sign it, whether it was the right procedure. Anyway, so we have a statement for his services, it's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And the motion's been made to approve it, there's been a second. You have any further questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we're ready to vote, we'll start with Francois?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Alice, yes?
Bill Holman's, yes.
Monroe, yes.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, off to go, all right. Thank you, you're leaving one for us, right?
Take care.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, I do want to get back to, to our violation of scenic bylaw, but I will, if everybody, because they have been sitting here, let Mr. Crane speak. So, this is, he asked me to put on the agenda to speak, it's not an action item for tonight, okay, just so you know. It means that we would take no action tonight. Okay, we don't, like, we had to vote to approve the plan, we had, we're not taking a vote tonight.
Why is that?
Well, that, because, because it's not, it's not, you just asked to speak, yes, we were not there yet. Paper, right, we didn't, however, so I'll let, so, the way this comes before us is, I received an email, with a board receiving email, on October thirty-first, that said, "I'd like to get onto the agenda for the next planning board meeting, I've had a couple of engineers up here, and also members of DCR. Everyone agrees that the reclamation is taking place naturally over the past twenty years. The proof of success is the wildlife that lives there and the unique vegetation growing there. DCR confirmed there is no current effect to any wetland, but stated that any type of machinery trying to reclaim what's there could very well be detrimental. Thank you, Alan M. Crane." And the background to this is that, two years ago, this is the property of Twenty-sixth Gardner Road, he's referring to, and he has purchased that property. Worcester Road. That's right. What's wrong on my file, which is why that mistake gets generated, I'm sorry. Anyway, just before you get to Elm Street coming into town, was, had been a former clay pit, and it went through the process of getting a, the process of reclamation, getting an order to restore it, which was recorded, and then, are you the, you're the owner of it now, you and, you alone, or with a money for? Okay, and then Alan Crane purchased it, subject to that restoration order. Okay, so that's for the public, that's where we stand. So, I'll let you speak.
Well, I have my engineer here to speak for me.
What was scientist?
Okay, well, you want to identify yourself, and why don't you let Bill? So he can hear her better, because we can hear you.
Hi, Bill, how's it going?
Don't get busy now.
What, what's your name again?
Mary Ann DiPinto.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi there, I worked for the Department of Environmental Protection for thirty years and took early retirement. I'm now doing private consulting. I went out to the, to Alan's property on a couple of occasions, and written up a report. What I'm, what I looked at, basically, is the clay pit versus sand and gravel pit. The clay, the way it was extracted, leaves a bowl shape, and it doesn't leave the kind of slopes that you see over in the sand pits, where they're always slumping in and eroding, and people writing ATVs all over them, and that kind of thing with trespassers, and Alan lives on the property, well, will live on the property, and had, okay. And keeps some of his work equipment on the site as well. I was actually amazed at how it has progressed, I have aerial photography from two thousand and one to twenty nineteen. You can see the vegetation that's, that's grown in, the hill, the hillsides are entirely vegetated. There is a couple of slopes there, they're not, that are in relatively good, relatively good condition. I actually had members of DCR come out and take a look at it as well, because it abuts the DCR property. It was Ben McGinnis and Alan Rantella, and Alan responded to my request. The purpose of my site inspection was to determine the current status of the former clay pit and the restoration that has occurred naturally to date. I've also spoken with biologist Rebecca Zimmer from Natural Heritage to discuss the quality of the habitat there, and she connected me with another member of Natural Heritage, restoration ecologist Chris Buell, I've yet to speak to him, and I won't be able to do that. What I've, what I've observed there is, the areas that appear to be unvegetated are in fact growing things, and it's what's called a barren's habitat, which is highly unusual, very unique. Is lichens growing there, some kinds, there's some golden rods that are unusual, I'm afraid they're rare, we haven't gone there yet. I know, and this, this pit, the way it's coming back and the variety of habitat that exists there, it's not only the deer hunting that's going on, because I know there are food plots also planted out there that I would say seventy-five to ninety percent of it has re-vegetated. uh, because I know there are food plots also planted out there that, I would say seventy-five to ninety percent of it has revegetated. Uh, there are some exposed surfaces, but those surfaces, even those are growing mosses and lichens and, and so on. With the owner living on the site, there's, it's less likely that, uh, that there be trespassers and injury and so on, but the slopes though, are not the kind of slopes that you see in the gravel pits. I also have, uh, soils map that shows from the air how much has grown back in. And you can't really see that barren's habitat from this, uh, aerial photography, but you can see the variety of vegetation that's come in around the periphery of it. Uh, DCR, it was not concerned, was more concerned about it being restored, having Phil brought in and eroding, potentially eroding. There is a retention pond, a U-shaped retention pond that exists between the, uh, former clay pit and DCR property, uh, that is still functioning, however, there's so much vegetation between it and any exposed surfaces that DCR is not at all concerned about it remaining as it is. So it was my professional opinion that the habitat itself, the vegetation has been substantially restored. The habitat is unique and coming in with Phil, to meet some kind of grades would be detrimental to the habitat that exists there now. Normally I'd say restore it, but it's happening naturally and it was pretty impressive actually, with the type of plants and, uh, that were growing.
So, uh, I, I wanna,
Turn them out.
Yeah, well, it's just, it's just awkward. I just wanted to say, Bill, there was handed to us tonight, um, by them, a report, her report, doesn't seem to have that aerial picture in it.
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
I can scan them in right now.
Um, so my inclination would be to, to give the board a chance to read this, to give you a chance to read it, and to set it on the agenda again for November fifteenth. Is that a date that you could?
Oh.
Oh dear.
That's what dated my surgery.
Dear, okay, we get to.
She's already talked to us about, do we have to have?
Yeah, you definitely have to have me here. He has comments though, if he gets written comments to me for four fifty.
Okay, I, I'm trying to, you know, he, he was the author of the original order, and we went through a lot of hearings with it. And we have walked that, and I have to say, my impression isn't your impression, I remember the clay sitting there, I remember the high banks, I remember the trees, and this was only a year ago, so it can't have changed that much in a year, but, I think that it, I mean, if we were going to make any modifications, we would certainly have to take a trip out. You'd certainly have to put what you will, are willing to do and you're not willing to do when a requested amendment, I mean, there has to be a process.
Did you walk it like in the summertime or fall or winter?
Summer.
Because it's, in the summertime is when it has the most vegetation.
This was, uh, cracked clay in the bottom with very scruffy. And quite steep hills, which I thought was kind of good, because that was where the top sill was mostly laid, right? I'm just, it's my impression, but it's not like, you, you cannot say I, we, this board hasn't been there and seen it. It's, so. Well, then all the more reason, right, that if you, if somebody's requesting a change, but Bill, if they were to, want to petition us in some way, how would you suggest they go about it? It can't be by a five-line email, it has to be a request for, uh, I mean, it has to be a formal.
Yeah.
You know, this is a report, I understand that, right? But it would have to, it would have to be some kind of a submission for an amendment to an existing order or something?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Okay, so.
It would be, it would be a request for an amendment of the reclamation order.
We don't have that form.
And it should be in writing.
Yep.
And I would suggest that they fill out the application form completely, so we have current information, contact information. Uh, they get the sign-off from the tax collector, all of that should probably be on the pla, on the, the application.
So there is a form that we have, you would have to modify that form, but provide that.
No, we said you don't have that.
I've never seen one, I can make one.
I can give you the original one that was filed, we have a copy of that, right? In fact, why don't you give her? You know, you, you don't have to give her the whole, you could give her the application.
Okay.
If there's a lot of attachments to it.
Okay.
Um, and then you can put, you can put.
I can email you whatever I have.
And you, you know, you can put not applicable, if it's not applicable, there was stuff that wasn't applicable in the original one. But at least it's a form and it's a way for us to go forward. And then I would suggest that, maybe we, maybe we would want to bump it two out, if you want to be part of this, are you going to, you expect to be?
I, I kinda like to have here.
Would you be, if we, so a meeting after that, is December second?
December second.
December second?
December, and if I, well, I have to be driven at that point, it's a shoulder thing, so I, I'm supposed to drive.
I was gonna say, yeah, we can do it virtually too like that.
It's not that easy anymore, so.
The problem is that if we need a site visit, it's gonna be dark at the time of our meeting.
Right.
So.
One cry.
Can we go before? Go last week, yeah. Just post that and go.
Well, if we, if we can get it, if we can get it organized among our group with a notice from, we could be there, is there a time that's, after a certain hour that's good for you, if we were to go?
No, you just let me know, and I'll be there.
Your home, or you can get free to come?
Yeah.
Okay, because mo, everybody works on this committee but me, so it'd probably be just about quitting time before it gets too dark. Or a Saturday morning, one of those two. Um, Bill, yes.
Just a reminder that it's hunting season, everybody should be wearing blaze orange.
Yes.
Okay, you, you hear Bill? If you're gonna come on this, it's gotta be.
I have a ton of supplies.
I'm bringing, bringing my bow, so.
Alright. We will in the meantime, circulate the, put this on our board, uh, is this submission from you, okay? And you can incorporate it in your application for the reasons stated in this report, right? And we will see you again, we'll put it on as agenda item on the.
Same, and I'm gonna take this, by the time December comes up, it's all leaves.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna look.
Well, we're gonna try to get there before the second, we just don't want to make her come back to the next meeting. And I don't want to schedule a special meeting for this, because we just can't do that, so. Okay, so if we try to, if, do I have his, do I have your, well, I have your email, do you have a phone number for him?
I'm sure.
Alright, we will be in touch with you about a possible sidewalk, we'll accept this, we'll put you on the agenda for December second.
And you have the attachments now, she's giving them.
And you're going to, in the meantime, get a form to us requesting what you want to do. And if you can get it sooner rather than later, I can run it by Bill and see what's missing on it, if anything.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question for Mr., uh, for, for the present owner, if I may.
Yeah, can you turn it around, we're gonna turn you around.
It's getting dizzy, so, a quick question, I do recall that during the, uh, question and answer that we had, when you were in the process of purchasing this property. I think I specifically asked as to whether or not you were going to be carrying out the remediation effort that had been proposed earlier by the prior owner. As I recall, at that point in time, you had indicated yes. Now, this is a very big change, and you're coming back to the, uh, planning board indicating that there's some significant, uh, changes that have taken place on this property, so I'm kind of curious, and would like to understand from you, what is? If I may finish, if I may finish? Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what prompted this change and when did this occur? Because I do recall that this was not too long ago that we had this. Thank you.
Good. Um, at that time, Casella was gonna do the reclamation for free, and I was all for it, I wanted to appease the town, make you guys happy. But since that time, they no longer do it. There's nobody that will do it, so, and I'm not gonna pay for it. That I, when I agreed to take on the reclamation, that was, you know, I was on the impression that somebody was gonna come in and do it. I don't have the money, the funds to do a project like that, so.
And the reason being for that, I believe, and I've heard through the people from the reclamation, the paper company is, if the purchasing of paper is down so much.
Yeah. They don't have the. You think Casella lost the contract or something?
They've lost all of that.
They're not doing the biometries anymore.
So, I know they just, they just did want to put Sawyers in Pupertown, and they didn't want it, uh, Purniers also, but. Yeah, so I, I missed the ship. I know, because prior owner wanted to do the reclamation also too, and they, they had talked to Casella about doing it.
Correct. And I do know, and I do, I mean, I do understand COVID did come in, into play here, and, but I think, from what I'm hearing from you, and I'm not stating if it's right or wrong, it's simply stating that, from your perspective at this point in time, the reason that you are no longer pursuing that particular avenue is, is because it is a financial, uh, it is a financial burden on you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, if it were to be done, uh, with the reclamation at a cost, have you already received a, an estimate of what the cost would be?
Nope. No clue. And, you know, honestly, now that, uh, I've had my professional look at it, I, and they say that DCR agrees, it's a unique property, I, I like it, I mean, the kids like it, they like going out there and sledding on the hills. I grew up back there, I've been using the land for a long time, as it is anyways. And, uh, it's unique, it's neat, it's not, it's not in the water table at all, it's above the water table, so it's just.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I mean, the only, the, the only concern I have here is, is that this, this big change of, uh, of, 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 the way that was presented earlier versus how it's being presented now. And I understand that there's a financial concern that comes along with this here, also understanding very well that the town does hold a, from what I understand, a, a, um, a, a bond or something equivalent to it, to the financial surety for the remediation. I'd like to understand potentially what that, what that financial remediation, uh, surety would be, and if that would potentially cover the costs, that's why I was asking, if the remediation effort that is offered potentially by Casella would be covered with those, uh, with those funds?
Um, possibly, but that ten thousand dollars is the bond.
It's gonna be nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it, this, uh, that's my money, I paid extra money, I paid extra ten thousand for the property. To get that ten thousand back, so I don't want to use that ten thousand on something that I never agreed to do.
Well, I, 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 I would not say that you didn't agree to do, I mean, at that point in time, you did agree to do it, and at this point in time, you're saying that you don't. And I'm not disputing that we may find out that it may not necessarily be, that it may not be necessary. However, I would like to, I would like to point out to the board, I think that we really need to understand and explore what the current situation is versus what it was before. And what was agreed by the prior owner and by the present owner when he assumed the responsibility for purchasing this property. Thanks very much for, uh, letting, uh, for, 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 for answering the question.
Okay. So I'm going to both out this item for the moment, but we have an agreement, you're gonna submit something in writing, we're gonna try to maybe organize a walk. And we'll see you on the December second. Okay, we would, we, we wouldn't take action tonight anyway, we need to read.
No, absolutely.
We need a process, okay.
That I, you know, I'm paying money, have, I, I, I'm not rich, so I can't have this linger out for a year, I'm gonna go broke trying to make a point.
Alright. On to the next item.
Yeah, some new stuff I need to look at.
You've got it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, going back to B, nothing's easy tonight. Alright, so, B is, the background story on this, and Jeff is here and Bill is also involved in this, is, um, I guess I, it, it can explain it to you, we, we were presented with the scenic road application, I believe in August or something thereabouts. On forty, it is forty-one, Fieldville Road, it's a vacant lot, so the address is a little bit, oh, I know it's right across from forty. It's Assessor's Map eight, Lot sixty-four B. And it was presented to us, um, as a, a request to remove nine trees and fifteen feet of stone wall for installation of a driveway into this lot. And what happened through whatever, whatever reason was, is that all fourteen, that they removed thirteen trees along the whole frontage and in the process of pulling the trees cut behind the wall, pulled them over the wall, and so all of the field stones along the front that formed the boundary, right of way have been overturned and it's rutted and it's a mess, and we have complaints from neighbors. So I again referred this complaint to, went out and I saw it, and I think the planning board definitely bears some responsibility because, because it was a driveway permit, we didn't insist upon the kind of plan that was presented tonight. The scale drawing, the trees are here, there were pictures submitted that showed clumps of trees, as maybe as many as nine, right by the driveway, I assume that's what they were talking about. Um, but I didn't go out and look at it. And apparently the trees were flagged originally, nine of them, and then they added four more of them, and they were all cut. So.
They weren't honest with their work.
They weren't, well, the problem is what can be done at this point?
Can I address that, just, I want to make sure we're clear, so, I never saw the original application, um, I never had, uh, anything in writing.
Why don't you get the original application?
Sometimes I do, but I, I, I couldn't find any record on this one. Um, so I think it all went through phone calls, um, I spoke to, I don't remember who I spoke to there. They talked about nine trees, when I got out there to look at it, I was confused, because there was a whole bunch of, these had been tagged years ago as well, I think there were some overlapping plans that had been going on there. Uh, it may have been my suggestion, let's just ask for all of them, so that if you were, i- if the nine isn't enough, you have permission to remove all thirteen if you need them. I think that was how that conversation went.
Oh.
So, that's what I was trying to relay in the email was, that may have been in my suggestion, I, I don't recall exactly.
I guess my question is, I think the planning board was anticipating, again, tonight was novel, and now I'm alerted to it, right? So now we, we know the reason they wanted it down, it does fit in the criteria, I'm confident in that vote, right? I think the board felt that you would say it fits into this criteria or it doesn't fit into this criteria. So were those fourteen trees, were any of them like, I mean, there was no particular information in your report aside from just the diameter. Did they, was there any reason articulated why they, the whole length of the wall, all those trees should be removed, were they diseased, were they?
No, it was, it was their application, it was a total of thirteen trees of, of size, there were some other small ones in there as well. In, in seventeen years, I've never had such an issue with a tree hearing. Anything that's not a scenic road, I, I do myself, that's just me and the applicant, and that's pretty straightforward, usually it's a driveway cut.
Right.
With the planning board, a- again, it's, I've never, it just hasn't happened before.
There's a note of loss to us all.
You haven't had a scenic road one before? You have.
I've had scenic road applications, um, but it, it just never had so much, uh, uh, pushback on it after the fact. So, being, the guidelines of the scenic road, I guess, are a little outside of what I'm looking at. I was, are basically arranging, you know, what they were looking to have done, get that submitted to the planning board, so they have a written description, my opinion aside.
Okay, so going forward, and then I'm gonna get, deal with what we're gonna do here, if anything we can do. Uh, I don't think we're going to have a situation where we waive the plan again. The scenic road bylaw says petitioner shall submit a plan to scale, doesn't have to be professional, but it has to show the location of the trees to be removed, and should also show any others, the wall. And it would also show probably the trees that aren't to be, to be removed, you know, you can see, think of Xs over the ones like tonight, but we accepted the ones tonight, and then we will go out and take a look at that. But I think that there needs to be an understanding between all of us here, that this bylaw, this, is, is to protect the trees, and it has to fit into a criteria to remove those trees. So I'm not saying, you know, I didn't, I didn't go out and look at the trees, it's probably the only one I haven't driven out and looked at, and I regret it.
And the other, and the other thing is, they didn't come to the, the meeting, we just.
No. Well, it was.
They were here.
It was a Zoom meeting, they were.
Well.
And we, then they.
No, that's right.
You know, we need to do this as a driveway, but that is in a hu, two hundred feet down the road.
Yeah, and a couple of things I would add too, uh, because again, there was talk about the stumpage left behind too, so, if we're removing trees, what is the plant for stumps, are we leaving them, or are they gonna be required to remove those stumps? That might be something to factor in. I will, when this comes up in the future, I will be a little more clear in understanding what the point of removing the trees is, because that's gonna obviously be helpful to making your decision on that, if they, anything that's dead or dangerous, truly dangerous, the town is going to address that, anything that's otherwise would be up to the property owner. It's like, so sometimes I, I've had requests, because I just don't like the tree, it's messy, it's in my wires. So sometimes I I've had requests because I just don't like the tree. It's messy. It's in my wires. I I want to put a driveway in or. It's hollow, whatever.
But it can't be, I'd like to have the space for off-street parking. You know, it cannot be just nothing. I want this tree out of here, you know, it's it's just cannot be that way.
Certainly.
So. And I do think, and Bill agrees with this, that we are within our rights to say. You must restore that wall. They said they were gonna remove fifteen feet and it's damaged the whole.
And that's well beyond my jurisdiction. I have nothing.
So and you have nothing to do with that. So I think another thing we need to do is Mallory is in the process of. Revising the application form to make it clear the plans we needed. And I think you can put the criteria on it too. We'll do that. Check the criteria which apply for the homeowner. So we can do that. And then I think. This also calls for a written decision from us. And that decision could say tree shall, stump shall be cut within four inches of the ground, whatever, you know, ruts must be filled in. We can do that if if you want to help us work on that language.
Oh, certainly.
And then that would take it off your plate and make it part of our order of conditions, which doesn't mean you shouldn't tell them too, because people don't read.
Well, I think if you have that written right out. And I I saw. Boston area and everybody has strict ordinances out there. And when you just simply put up. Here's what's required to remove a town tree, a lot of people are gonna stop right there. If you have a clear set of guidelines, it's for driveway line of sight. Uh whatever it may be, well, if my trees don't fall into that, then maybe I'm not gonna bother filling this out and going through the hearing and paying the fee and all that.
And the other thing also is like. Mrs. Root didn't realize that they have to bear the cost if they want to take them down, which you put down on the form too.
Mallory, you're taking notes.
They're gonna be issuing books.
Well, it's funny because this one came up just shortly after all this had happened. So I warned them. I said, make sure you know, you know, have your. Have your information lined up and ready to go. And it seems like they did a little homework.
And I made them submit a plan.
Yeah.
So I know which trees it is.
And I think this is awesome that you're here tonight because normally we don't really hear from too many people like yourself. And we, while we get a report, so actually I have to communicate with you. We can really settle a lot of issues, maybe in this issue here, work it out so it works for us because the first one came in on Heelville. We had never done that before and we were kind of. Trying to learn from that experience and.
I know over the years it's been different levels of effort put into these tree here and usually it's one or two trees.
Right, right.
I think I think we're gonna be, we're gonna tighten up on it because that is how the bylaw reads. It's been effect since nineteen seventy-nine. So the reason Hubbardston looks the way it does. And doesn't look like the other towns where the front yards go to the curb, but we have a nice fake canopy. Because forty years has been a consistent effort to preserve the trees on many major roads, not just one or two. But that list is long, right?
It was more scenic roads.
So we have an obligation and it does make, the guy across the street is really, really unhappy. Well, we, so.
I spoke to someone across the street.
So I don't know. I think that, so Bill, I sent this to you guys, right? Did you get a chance to read it? I think. This uh maybe it's in the notes. It's, their name is Dennis Jeffrey and Nancy Dennis. It's an enforcement order. It basically says, as a result of extensive tree clearing and related operations that damaged the stone wall. The planning board is here with notifying you of their intention to reopen the scenic process for your lot on Heelville Road in Hubbardston. The board has received numerous complaints from the butters and neighbors on Heelville Road related to. Relating to the damage created. The purpose of the scenic road regulation is to preserve to maximum extent possible the number of existing trees along the scenic road, also incorporated in the bylaws preservation of stone walls along the same roadways. Both have been significantly altered by your recent clearing operations. During the cutting operations, heavy equipment used. Heavy, the heavy equipment used traveled up and over the existing field stone wall, damaging it extensively. During the discussions and the presentation of your application, you noted that only fifteen feet of the wall needed to be removed. The damage to the wall is now even in the area of the proposed driveway, which creates a violation of the scenic road bylaw. So anyway, it goes on. This is a notice of that and it asks um. Uh you can read the whole thing. We do a lot on the agenda, but the board notes um. And then he says also the board notes that the submitted septic plan indicates wetlands existing on the property. They submitted the wet. They didn't submit a plan where these trees were, but they submitted a septic plan a little bit. Uh that showed the right of way. So he said on, so Bill says on that plan. Uh wetlands exist on the property to the rear of the house. So we're just sending a copy of this to the conservation commission. Because they may have cut within the hundred feet of the wetland as well and they may have a problem there that's out of our jurisdiction. Uh but it's the board's intent to meet with you at their, we have to decide here, November fifteenth to December second. Meeting. If you are not able to attend this meeting, you need to extend to a different date. We need to hear from you and alternate a prior to that meeting. Should we not receive a response to this communication, the board will meet on that date to discuss revocation issue of the permit issued. So. This letter would go out. I assume they would contact us. Um and hopefully would hire somebody to come back in with the plan on how they plan to restore. The wall, the stumps, the ruts. So. Have you had a chance to read this letter? Bill, would you like to add to this discussion?
Yeah, I did. I would involve the DPW because those stumps that stick up excessively create a hazard that's not visible. And they may, the DPW may require them to be removed for basic safety reasons.
So should we, I modify this letter saying I'm also sending this letter to the DPW due to concern of the safety posed by the stamps?
No, it the uh you might want to send a separate note to the DPW to that effect. But they're CC'd on the bottom. I CC'd the conservation commission. The DPW, uh the building commissioner and. The Department of Conservation recommend, uh Recreation.
Oh, it does. I do see DPW on it. I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send it and maybe we send them, maybe I'll send Travis a note. Saying we have some concern about the height of those trees, the stumps.
Yeah.
Anything hazard on the road.
But again, you mentioned that you'd want the ruts and the stumps and the wall fixed and fixed. So that would be something the board would mention when you meet with the property owner.
Should we modify this letter to say? We need to have you meet with us to address how you're gonna remediate wall, stumps, ruts.
I think that's fair. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so. I guess I want to know, is the board on uh on board with sending a note? To them, a notice of violation for this permit that was issued. Roughly in the form here, probably adding what we're expecting in the way of remediation. Um and asking them to come back. And if so, do you have a preference for the fifteenth or December? I think we ought to do it sooner, honestly, because you're gonna have it all frozen into ice, right?
Yeah.
All right, so what's our next meeting?
I think the eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Eighteenth of November.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Vote to, I think we should have a vote to send such a letter.
I make this got motion.
So we got a first, any more further discussion, anybody? Okay, voting, Francois. Uh he says yes, John.
Aye.
Bill, I'm aye.
I'm aye.
And and that's one, and that's an affirmative, yes.
Yes, okay. Again, it's all right. Can you put in your notes also for them to revise those forms? I'm gonna put it on the top of the agenda and I'm gonna involve you in it.
Did you get the draft when I sent over?
I did, but I didn't. I want, I want to put the criteria, I want to rework it. I think he, I think Jeff makes a very good point. Should say you pay for it and these are the criteria it must meet in order for this board to be able to grant it, right?
Oh, I think with this conversation with Jeff also, he understands, you know, he didn't, he didn't see the permit. He probably needs to see it before he.
Yeah. Usually I would have it in my email and it wasn't there.
Yeah. So just to confuse you when it be there.
Well, ask for it and remember to see it.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll try to. Try to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Learning process.
Yeah. The hard way. Okay, thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Uh we'll work together and get this resolved. Thank you.
I'll just a reminder that Damon's hopping on in fifteen minutes. We gave him seven forty-five for Damon.
Yeah, he did. He wanted to come and speak. He was very adamant about it.
Logging in online, so. Just gotta keep an eye on the time.
I would like to, however, I, we need to get some of the stuff we need to get to. On this, so um, all right, so. D here, let me tell you what's going on with D, okay? I met, I I I met with uh David Nixon. They're already putting together. The draft agenda for the annual town meeting, which I believe is June seventh. First Thursday in June, is it?
Yeah.
Anyway, um and he said uh. There were two reasons he wanted to meet with us and he was gonna be here tonight, one of which is the select board is finally. Uh I shouldn't say this, the select board. Has listened to us, I believe, on the enforcement issues and they want to, and they've had a town council look, they've had to look at it. And they want to increase the penalties, which presently stand at fifty bucks a violation. So it's cheaper to violate and pay the fifty bucks than it is to go to, you know. And so he's gonna present that and I wanted to give him a chance to do that, but he was. They didn't get to it at the select board meeting, so that's why we're not getting to it tonight, okay? But. Then he asked us, what are we planning to do, okay, for that meeting? What agenda items do we want, warrant items do we want to put on?
For the town meeting?
Yes, for the town meeting. So, you know, you can always like not make a target or you can, but this is, this is forcing us to do some serious thinking here. So. The bylaws that are up for discussion and revision this year that I mentioned to him would be. Um and you, you know this already, but let me recap. The rate of development by law, we have to do where it expires unless we're not gonna do it. Um and let it expire. The, which I was willing to do last year and I got a lot of rejection to that. So there are a lot of people that don't want that to happen. So I think that has to be on the agenda. This increase in civil penalties, it's a very easy fix. I think we can do it with a quick vote. I don't think there's gonna be, but I want David to come and present it. So that'll be the fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm honestly not on board with that unless David comes and explains really what he's doing and what is that process is behind it. Because with the way there hasn't been a violation issued in over two years. Uh I think we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers and our constituents if we just increase the penalties for some.
Without other actions. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there really needs to be some kind of comprehensive reform instead of us just sticking an additional tax. And it's also fifty dollars per day. It's not fifty dollars.
Right.
So to look at and say, well, fifty dollars isn't that much, but yeah, fifty dollars per day. Um the other issue I have with it is. Uh when you look at something like what's going on with some of the accessory uses for farms. There's people who are very much in violation of our zoning bylaws right now. And when you start running that fifty dollars a day back five years or. If you call it habitable and you move it up to the three hundred dollars a day, which I think is what they're proposing, it's just, it's nuts. Like we, we have to fix. The framework that people aren't complying within. Fix our enforcement mechanisms and then think about changing what the penalty is. Uh I think it makes no sense that that David's asking for this. Uh I also think there might be a point of order on this. Now, the select board didn't have a vote on this, uh but he sent it over as a transmittal. Doesn't that start running the sixty-day clock on whether or not we have to consider it? Because.
He hasn't really submitted to me in writing. It would have to come from a select board in formal request. Well, he did send a letter.
Yeah, he did send a letter.
Um.
It's formal, isn't it?
So I think that starts a sixty-day clock on we have to have a vote.
Does that include, does that include bylaws submitted by town agencies? I know it does of the citizens petition.
See, I don't know if he was sending it as the agent of the select board though.
It's on, it's on letterhead.
Yeah.
So it has to be considered from the town office.
The select board can submit to us. I don't know if just a regular town authority can.
Well, that's why it was maybe meeting with the select board. I I think though that in terms of, I mean. With this penalty provision, it may be that that the response we'll have to that will be before any penalty can be assessed, there must be a first, second, third letter. Or, I mean, there's some sort of mechanism. Because you can't just go back and say, well, here's a picture that shows you were selling cars from this residential lot ten years ago. So ten years times, you know, you can't do, it has to be, you know, just due process. It has to have letters that were certified. So maybe that should be added to that provision.
I I also just think we need another really good reason to throw another bylaw on. Because we have a bunch of stuff that we know we have to do because people are either in in active defiance of it.
Or they don't want.
Yeah, or there, there's clear economic interest, like with what goes on with the farm properties. Um where the fact that there's so many people who are breaking the law on it demonstrates that there's an economic need because they wouldn't be doing it. Uh in violation of the law if there wasn't an economic need. So that's, that's a failure on us as regulators to to not recognize the legit economic. Need and help them find a way to comply.
Yeah, and I I do, I'll think it's kind of a a circle because. We're telling them. What is the point of a zoning board if there is no enforcement?
Well, there isn't any right now.
Well, zoning board is, yeah.
There isn't, there isn't any enforcement.
There is no enforcement. So we have been pushing them to get, and and what they say is the penalties. The pen, the needs to drive enough, it has, penalties have to be stiff enough so that somebody will comply. And they have to be enough so that it would be worth paying the legal fees to go to court. It this, that both these problems need fixing. And I'm not sure we can say we have to fix every bylaw that's out there. Before we do anything about the penalties, so I think.
Madam Chair. I'd like to add a, I'd like to add a third item and that is is that because we do have a lack of enforcement. We also have a lack of clarity as to what is being enforced and where the violations are. I have known and known people who are in town. Who say, well, I'm supposed to have violated something, but I really don't know what the violation is. And so if you're going to take or somebody's gonna take retroactively and say, hey, ten years ago, you had X amount of. Let's take the case of the cars that you just mentioned. Uh on the lot and you're not supposed to do this here. And there was no clear definition in terms of what the violation was. It is going to be very detrimental for the town to impose something like this here. And I think it's going to have some very, very severe penalties. Uh for the town from a reputational perspective, if we go after people in in this manner.
Well, you'd have to have, you would have to have a warning letter first. A cease and desist kind of order. This isn't allowed and this is what you're doing.
Correct, but again, we need to take it into consideration from what time forward. The problem here is is I do know that there are individuals within the town who are interested in going after certain individuals or just simply after certain groups. Retroactively and say, well, ten years ago, you did something like this here. And so as a result of this, you're ten years by, you know, multiplied by fifty dollars or three hundred dollars a day. You're gonna bankrupt not only people, but I think that if this ever got to become a court case, we'd be, we'd, we'd be, we'd be looking like a laughing stock, quite frankly.
Well, I mean.
I think I agree with Francois and I think. If we're gonna do this, we need to make sure that we know what zoning bylaws say.
Yeah.
Need to make sure that the people are, if they're gonna be, if we're finding that like the farmers are violating this. I don't know if a lot of those folks even know that.
Yeah.
Doesn't say.
We need to get our, we need to get our own house in order first in order to make sure that we're doing this properly. Sorry?
I'm only one person on this board.
No, I understand.
That fixing this penalty clause is something that should be kicked down the road until we have all of the other problems resolved. Because there are so many other problems and it's a catch twenty-two. If you. If you cannot enforce any bylaw. Then you can go ahead and fix them. It'll take us five years to fix them all. You're gonna not force anything for five years. I mean, I.
I'm just saying, I'm 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 just, I'm just reiterating what I heard earlier from Christopher and I do agree with him and that is is that we have at this point in time. A quality enforcement system within our own town that needs to be addressed. And that, in my opinion, that that's where things start. Then from there on, we need to also understand as of when does this enforcement be coming to effect so that we can properly handle enforcement. And not just arbitrarily go back and say, well, you know, at this point in time, your penalty is X amount of dollars because this is what we are. We as a planning board or we as a town have 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 agreed to. We we really need to go af- after this here in a much, much more measured fashion and indicate very clearly that we have our house in order.
Right, yeah, this is John. I I completely agree. I don't think we should be enforcing penalties on things that we don't even agree should be in place and there should absolutely be no retroactive anything.
Or for all intents and purposes that there, that that enforcement has not properly taken place or notifications have been taken place. That is an issue.
It nee, it needs to be forward-looking and it needs to have a process. It can only be.
Yes, fully agree.
Just, just as as an aside for everybody. Uh Master and the Lock already covers this. You you can't go back ten years. That's ludicrous. There is a statute of limitations, even on zoning violations and environmental regulations and all that kind of stuff. So y- yeah, you you really. You you shouldn't be worried about ten years and going back. Um. You give somebody a notice of violation, you also are. You give somebody a notice of violation, you also are required to inform them what they're in violation of. And usually that's a citation to a zoning regulation. And it's not the planning board's fault that they don't wanna read the zoning bylaw. It's whoever receives the, the notification. I mean, it, it's a two-way street, just to kind of ring you guys back so that you're not going off on a tangent.
Okay, and I wanna just add to that too, with the non-criminal disposition, the town has to vote to accept it, but we also have to have a hearings officer. So that's why. I've been told we haven't issued any violations, it's because we have no one to hear, um, a, a hearing if someone came forward and opposed their, their violation.
So we're not, we're, what you're saying here is, is we're not even structured to be able to, 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 to handle this here.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't I? Um, the town administrator, David Nixon, is coming on the fifteenth instead. Um, and I think that's after the next select board meeting. So prior to the next select board meeting, I could send him a letter as the chair saying, we have received your letter. Um, and we believe that, uh, you cannot just, that, uh, revise the penalty, there needs to be a specified. There needs to be a specified hearing officer and a process. Is that generally included in the zoning bylaws, Bill?
Well, I mean, the, if, if you, if the zoning enforcement officer finds somebody in violation. They have the choice to go to the zoning board of appeals and appeal the zoning violation to the ZBA. There are certain parts of your zoning by law and subdivision that don't let the building inspector become the zoning enforcement officer. And they have to appeal to Superior Court. And that's, that's the two things that go on here. Now, the assessment of fees, that's where you need to get into a localized, uh, hearing officer and, and those kind of things. And usually, once again, your hearing officers in many towns delegated from the zoning enforcement officer. To town council or somebody like that, but not always. And then that, that decision is potentially appealable to Superior Court or to. Uh, the zoning board of appeals, and of course, you can always appeal the zoning or appeals to Superior Court.
Is there language in one of the mass general laws that we can just track on this, put in?
I have a whole guidebook I can send over.
Okay, that we could just put a paragraph in, this is how it works, you get in this for some order.
Yep.
Who issued it and how it proceeds, okay?
Yep.
I have it right here, yeah.
Dropped it into the general.
Okay, so I'll try to, I'll try to send David, I mean, he's already coming, and he's the one that asked for the.
Yeah, I think my, my biggest problem with this is my, I'm, I'm coming up on a year since my original appointment. And at my first couple of meetings, we talked about how we had things we were having trouble enforcing. And we reached out to the select board, and granted, it was a different select board at the time, but nothing happened with it. And then now, there's been some conversations going back and forth. They've taken it up on, um, at a couple of their meetings, but this is the response that we get back. We, we don't need an increase in scale, we just need a baseline of enforcement. Because even, even now, so if you're talking about giving them the notice of violation. Uh, the first level, I believe, was still gonna be fifty dollars under the new framework. So we're still talking about exactly what we have now, and nobody's ever been able to keep a violation, so nobody would trigger that second or third level. So I, I honestly don't see the need for it.
Except you're never gonna get enforcement unless, unless the process begins.
We're never gonna get to the second level if we can't ever get a first.
We don't have, we don't have enforcement in place. As, the ZBA hearing. For one of the individuals who applied for variances, they're getting granted all five variances because we had, we couldn't get a, a letter from the building inspector's office. By law. Cause we have no enforcement on it. That needs to be fixed before we do anything else.
It's seven forty-five.
Alright, I'm done now. I will send a letter expressing our concerns, you guys will get copies of it, okay? I'm still not the town administrator, not, not even to bother to come in on the fifteenth, because we don't wanna hear it. I'm not sending that kind of letter.
There, there is a chance that this is part of some kind of more comprehensive.
Grand school, we can hope.
That he's doing, in which case I would be a lot more receptive to it.
Correct.
But if this is the answer to what we've been asking for, for a year, I'm not on board.
Okay, will not fix problem.
Second question.
Okay, so. Um, I am not ready to hear Damon yet, he's just gonna have to stay there for a minute. So, um. So we have, okay, so, I didn't even make it through this list, I can't tell you, I don't know how we're gonna proceed, anyway. The third thing on the list, because some of these, some of these things have to be done, is the accessory dwelling unit. And I'd like to have fifteen minutes of your time tonight to go through my checklist, and I will have a draft of that ready based on your comments by the next meeting, okay? Um, so I wanna do that, and I will take responsibility for that one. I will also take responsibility for leading the discussion on the rate of development, and that will be on the fifteenth as well. Cause we, I do think we have to do those two things.
Okay.
So, the fourth bylaw, which we, which really needs addressing is the marijuana bylaw. Um, and for two, for two reasons, one of which is, that it's full of flaws. The other reason is there is a major opportunity, somebody that's very serious about coming here, they've talked to us, the Wellmans. So if you could get to the point where you could establish a set of criteria around the higher tier grows, the land and so forth. This could be good revenue for the town. So there is an interest in getting, in getting that done, and Bill had an interesting idea on this. He says, the Wellmans have called back to follow up on the, when they met with me. And I just told them, you know, you're one of seven things on our list, you know? But Bill, to discuss, tell them, tell the board what you told me about maybe one way to go with this.
Well, they could, they could give you money. To retain a planner, to write a draft bill. Uh, and then they would, and I think we talked about this before. You know, under fifty-three G, they, you, you could hire a, a planning company to help write a commercial marijuana bylaw that would. Allow that use and clean up the bylaw. And it would be expeditious, it would work in their favor, it would work in the board's favor, nobody would be. Nothing would be, uh, slanted toward anyone's particular project or. Desire, you know, that the, it would be a impartial author. Writing a bylaw for the benefit of the town and both the applicant, and you could then discuss it and make sure that it works for all parties concerned.
So, there's an option we could consider, is it forty, chapter forty, section fifty-three G, where, where is that?
Yeah, I think it's forty-one.
Okay, we'll read it. Um, alright, so. Um, first of all, the first step, if, if we wanna pursue that would be to ask the Wellmans who are aware of the problem. So we're not unsympathetic, but we're not likely to get there at the rate we're going. If they would be interested in participating on that and being a partner. With that, and then if they said yes to that, Bill, I know, is not interested in doing this, because he's, doesn't have the time. But he might be able to refer us to someone that is, yes, capable and able to do it. Who might be able to give estimate for doing that, that, that we could then pass on to the Wellmans, along with a checklist somewhat like the one I'm doing tonight. With our ideas of what we want to be incorporated and changed.
We did do that at a previous meeting.
Yes.
I do have it.
The marijuana bylaw.
Yeah. So if we can do that, yeah, we should totally do that. Uh, if not, I probably can have a rough draft for it done by our December meeting, a really rough draft by law.
But, but you really wanna do the farm one, unless we're not gonna, you can only do so many of these, it's very time consuming.
It, it sounds like the EDC, uh, has kind of slow, kind of roll on that until they know what goes on with the, um, the overlay. At least that was what I got out of that last meeting.
Well, I mean, if you. I'm happy to have someone take it on, but I'm not gonna take it on. I have a draft, I have all my notes, and I have no, I have no problem, I think that the Wellmans would probably agree to this, but I haven't, I don't know if they would. Because you could still be voted down at town hall, I mean, town meeting, and then it'd be a waste of money.
I think we certainly should try. And, and looking at what the other towns that have done, uh, where they have had luck, uh, reforming it after it's been approved. They didn't just do the bylaw, they did like a whole informational package on, well, here's, here's why we're doing it. Here's the specific things that we're addressing. Because like at the, um, at the last town meeting when we were talking about the, um. Uh, the setbacks and the law fights, there were people like, well, this is totally way too restrictive. Like, well, but the whole town is zoned residential, and there's a lot of issues like that. That I think really need to be shown and explained to the voters ahead of time. I don't think this is a bylaw we can just walk into the town meeting and pass. This is something that would need a PR campaign for a couple of months, you know, to explain it, this is why we need it. This is what needs to happen, putting that up on the Facebook forums to air it, that would've been.
And run the, and run the hearing.
Good case to talk about it, we'll just wrap that up.
But like, there's, there's a lot that goes into it other than just the bylaw for that.
So, so Bill, if we were to. I, if I approached the Wellmans, I have no idea, any idea what something this might cost a range. From like your firm, firm doing it?
Um, ten to twenty?
Well, I mean, I should be honest with them, it might cost that much and to say. Then we've gotta write what, if they say yes, and we go out and seek a plan, it would have to include what we're really looking for, which would be in, including running the hearing and. Setting up a presentation as well as.
Right, right, and regulations, so you'd modify the bylaw, and you'd develop a set of regulations to go with it.
If, if the board, um. Wants me to at least make this phone call, we're not obligated to do anything and judge the interest of these people in doing it. What, what they tell me is, I do not have the name of the property, but what they tell me is that there would be no land clearing involved because it had been used as a farm. And it would hold somewhere between a tier seven and ten. So you want me to make that contact and report back?
Do we need a motion or can we just?
Do we need a motion, Bill, to contact them?
I don't think so, there's no contract being made.
Yeah.
Okay, I will do it, I will call the Wellmans.
I don't think their last name is, is.
No, it isn't, the Wellman, but it's.
Wellman Farms.
Wellman Farms, people. Okay, you have that on the list.
Yes.
Okay, so then, um, we have Bill, uh, Bill, yeah. Francois has been working very hard on the best battery energy storage system, which has been stalled for at least a year. And he presented a draft, it was in your documents, to be read, and, um. I'm inclined to, Bill, can I give you like ten minutes to just give the basics here?
Francois?
Francois, I'm sorry, Francois.
I know he's more, I know he's more handsome than I am, which is okay. I think, so let me.
Yeah, I'll give you ten minutes and then we'll decide where to go from there, okay?
I, I think everybody who, uh, was, uh, part of our planning board is, is again, part of the planning board as of, uh, this, as of this, uh, year. Back in the, uh, I think it was February, February timeframe, uh, did receive a copy of this year. And I think that at that point in time, the, the, since then, I should say, the, uh, draft that is up on the, uh, on the shared drive. Has changed, but the changes are, uh, pretty surgical. And, uh. I would just like to point out, there is a section five, which is the main change, one of the main changes which took place. At that point in time, we had what is known as a tier one versus a tier two. Tier one is basically any, anything that is typically considered to be, uh, a battery energy storage system that most residents would have. If they had like, for example, a solar, uh, panels, uh, on, on their homes where they would store also, uh, the electric city that they are accumulating during the day. At that point in time, we basically had indicated, no, this would not be permitted. But, actually, per discussions that I had with Christopher and other members of the board, there is a very good reason in case for us not to. Uh, uh, include that as part of this, uh, uh, bylaw. And the way it's been done is, is that it right now reads that the tier one battery energy storage systems. Shall be permitted in all zoning districts, subject to the uniform code, uh, and the battery energy storage, uh, system permit and exempt from the site plan review. So that is a major change, uh, from what we had previously. The, uh, battery energy storage tier two facilities at this point in time are defined, uh, six hundred kilowatt or over. And, uh, it basically models a bylaw that we, as a matter of fact, uh, Alice and I discussed with, uh, members of, uh. The town of Athol, where they have a similar bylaw already in place. And what we have included in here basically is pretty much the same information that we had earlier. But again, just, uh, carving out that this will be permitted only within the town of Hoberson, within the commercial zone district. And also I added in this particular case, within the large-scale solar photovoltaic installations. Let me explain why I added this here, we had, as you may all remember. Uh, earlier in the year, uh, one of the large-scale, uh, uh, solar facilities, uh, requested at that point in time. By virtue of the fact that they have taken it under their ancillary facilities, the ability to add the battery energy storage system. I, at that point in time, objected, I still don't think it's the right way of doing it, and I abstained at the vote at that point in time. But I think by doing it this way, what we have done is, is we've included also large-scale, uh, solar photovoltaic facility installations. As places outside the commercial zone that could also house the battery energy storage systems. Any questions thus far?
One question.
Sure, go ahead.
So we talked, this is like, uh, with Bill and Francois. Possibly, you're not making it the entire commercial zone, but it would do instead of it as an overlay because there's three, what, there has to be a certain energy.
It's a, basically, it's, 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 it will be in the commercial zone, but one of the requirements typically for all of these. Uh, BESs, uh, facilities is that they have access to what is known as a three-phase wire system. And so, uh, that is, that is limited in most cases in the town of Hoberson to section, to certain sections where the commercial district is. Uh, to places north of, I think the, where, n- n- north, north to where the rec field is. Uh, and, and to where the boundaries and the limits are of the existing, uh, commercial zone.
And so the question I have is, is it worth putting together an overlay district specifically for, so it would be allowed on existing, uh. Allowed on permitted solar field sites, because we have to do that.
Yeah.
In my opinion, and also, um, independent of solar systems in, in the, in the, uh, best overlay zone and identify those properties instead?
We could do that, and that would be very specific, uh, the other way of doing it, in my opinion, this is basically limiting it to the commercial zone where. The infrastructure supports such, uh, where the electric infrastructure by, 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 by the, uh, distrib, by the distribution cut, by the distribution. Uh, company, in this case, uh, National Grid, uh, supports that infrastructure.
So you could, so two ways to do it, you could put the overlay zone on it, or you could say, commercial district with access to phase three wire.
Support, I, I would go as far as saying, supporting the, uh, uh, better, supporting interconnection with battery and large-scale battery energy storage systems. Tier, tier two battery energy storage systems.
Okay.
Okay?
You've got the language figured out how to modify that.
Exactly. I did also include.
People to get anybody in the commercial zone to say, okay, I'm gonna come in and apply for it and then. Realize they don't qualify, and I also, if we're gonna try to pass something, the few, the smaller the zone, if it only fits in a certain amount of property. The less controversy we're gonna stir up.
That, 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 that is a good reason to put an overlay district, just to let you know. Okay, because it would very clearly define where that could be put in place. And we all know that overlay zones can be modified in the future.
Right.
Should, should the infrastructure support that in the future too?
Okay, so.
The other thing. I, I can modify that.
And then go ahead.
I can modify that. The other item that I did include here is, is, uh, and this is per your suggestion on item number seven, which is the design standards. Uh, that has not changed, except for the fact that at the very end, I did include the suggestion of adding that it includes also without limitation. Any poles, new, and new, with new easements and or right-of-ways. That's something that you had proposed, and I did, uh, include that, and I think that is very reasonable for us to include here. That's item number seven, design standard, so the, okay? I mean, I can read it with the, with, uh, uh, but I think you understand where I'm going with this here. I did, in some places that we had here, uh, there were references to, uh, something known as the planning board. Uh, and I had, uh, I, I had, I had, I had it called out as Board of Planning and, and Community. So I've just uh, changed it, so now it says basically, like, a, a good example would be in, if you would like to go to. Under the section that says decommissioning, and that would be under, don't have page numbers, I apologize. F, yes, it's a section F, and if you go underneath there to section three under F, which just says, an inspection of the completed decommissioned area. Shall be reviewed by a, by the pla-, by a, a planning board appointed engineer. Okay, so instead of having the verbiage that I had earlier, which was uh, the Board of Planning and Committee, Community, et cetera. It basically at this point in time says, a planning board appointed engineer. Okay?
Okay.
The other area that has changed is, and it's not a change, at this point in time, I had a quick discussion with the other, the other gentleman who's a chairman in our board. Uh, Christopher, and it's actually item number twelve. Item number twelve is the severability. Uh, this was something that we picked up from the Athol, and there's a question as to whether or not this is really required or needed. I have therefore just simply highlighted it. Uh, it says that if the, i- i- the invalidity or unenforceability of any section. Subsequent paragraph, sentence, clause, provisions, phrase, or aforementioned sections. As declared by the valid judgment of any court of competent jurisdiction, be unconstitutional, shall not affect the validity or enforceability of. Any other section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, provision, or phrase, which shall remain in full force and effect. So I leave this here as something which I would like to have you, maybe uh, Alice and Chris. Who have a background in law, make a uh, hopefully an assessment and provide some feedback as to whether or not this particular section. Which is section number twelve be included or not as part of this uh, bylaw. Any question regarding to this here?
No, I got some other questions, but.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not finished yet. I, I, item number fourteen, which is the certificate to generate, I did take your uh, advice to he, I heated your advice, which is basically. Uh, we did indicate that, uh, and this basically was lifted very, very, I mean, this, 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 this clause. Or this section comes directly from the large-scale solar facility. There's been really no change to this here. What I did, however, is, is that. I added something to the effect because you had some concern that if we are uh, revoking a certificate to generate. Uh, uh, but for cause, that we should list at that point in time the reasons. And I have done so in the new version. The new version states the following, the planning board may revoke the certificate to generate after a public hearing. Uh, and be revoked, altered, or suspended by the Hoberson Planning Board as it deems necessary of any of the following grounds. One, for failure to pay license fees. Two, for failure to comply with the mass state laws regarding the operation of the battery energy storage. System facilities. And three, is for failure to provide timely and complete annual reports as outlined under the reporting requirements section. So right now, we have three very specific sections or, or, or uh, causes that potentially could be utilized here. If it were, uh, if, 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 if the applicant were uh, uh, seen, yeah, to, to fail any of these here. And I, I think that that addresses the concern that you brought up with regards to uh, public hearing. Uh, uh, revoking after the public hearing, uh, the revocation of the certificate to generate. These are significant issues that could potentially cost the uh, cost the board to uh, revoke this certificate to generate. Any questions regarding to that?
Might add like failure to maintain, I'm not sure it's exhaustive, you know, or dangerous or.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to take additional uh, sections, then we can discuss it as a, as a team or as a group here. Okay? Last but not least, uh, the reporting requirements. I've had some concerns and issues specifically with regards to the large-scale solar facilities that reports have been uh, scant and hardly ever incoming. And for that reason, uh, I put some, I put some additional wording here, and that says as follows. Once per year, the owner of the battery energy storage system installation must provide a report to the planning board with the following information. Total amount of electricity acquired, stored and distributed during the past calendar year, major maintenance performed, planned. Or actual major system modification, change of ownership, change to bond amounts. In addition, the annual report must also include the professional safety inspection, signed by a certified, signed and certified by a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer. Reports are due to the Hoberson Planning Board by the last day of January of the, each calendar of, of the following calendar year. And failure to provide timely annual report would prompt the Hoberson Planning Board to invoke a public hearing of the battery energy storage system operation that fails to provide such report. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather the required reporting information and review if cause exists to invoke the revocation of the certificate to generate. Costs incurred to publish and advertise the public hearing are borne by the owner of the battery energy storage facility.
Very good.
Okay, so uh, what I would suggest is everybody who is interested, and I would encourage everybody to do so. To go into the shared drive, again, this is a draft. Uh, I think it's pretty comprehensive. I know that Alice, you have read it, and you comments are not only appreciated, but uh, as I said, they were incorporated in here. And in addition, Christopher also, I, I know that he read it because he and I have had some discussion, but I also welcome. The other board members to not only review, but provide your feedback. I did also review the comments that you mentioned regarding pilot. As you know, we in the planning board do not deal with pilot. I do understand that this is a very important element for the town when it comes from a revenue perspective. And it's certainly our talking points when it comes to us having a opportunity to discuss this here at a town meeting. But it is not appropriate for us to include any mention of pilot in the, uh, in, in the uh, uh, in the bylaw itself. And last and not least, is the additional component with regards to the fees for an application. You did indicate that there had been a fee, I, I think you had indicated there was a fee of two thousand dollars. I'm assuming that is for the bat-, large-scale uh, solar facilities.
Application fee for the permit, right?
I, I did not see that in, in the existing bylaw as it is published in the uh, on, on our Hoberson site. Maybe you can point me again to where that is, and if, if that is necessary, I'm more than happy to look at it. I would probably stay away from the dollar amount, because the dollar amounts do change and have changed as a matter of fact over the last couple of years. And so my suggestion was to simply indicate that there is an applicable fee, and that would actually go hand in hand with the uh. With the, one of the paragraphs that I mentioned earlier, which basically, which, which includes the certificate to generate and the reasons for revocation.
Okay, so I, I have a cup, I have one major question, and then I have procedural questions and other people can ask questions. My major question is. Um, are we going to put, you, you say that this starts with a six hundred kilowatt system?
So that's, that's a good, go ahead.
Are they way to put an upper limit?
We can, and at this point in time, I would suggest that, I know that certain towns have done that, and they've gone all the way up to ten megawatts. That's something that I think we as a planning board can actually look at, and as a matter of fact, in a discussion that I had with one of our board members earlier. Uh, there is potentially this gray area between the tier one, which is typically what you would have in a home, and maybe in a very light commercial area. Uh, that is maybe using a little bit more or a bit more than what a resident, resident would use. Just need to understand what that lower threshold is. That lower threshold probably will be something that is based on what can fit in, what requires. What requirements there are for it to fit in a, uh, uh, within a structure. At least right now, what we have, I have found is, is that uh, it was six hundred uh, kilowatts is what does typically require a container. And not only that, but I now found out there's one additional company that can also fit something that is five hundred ma-, uh, kilowatts. So there's some more re-, a little bit more research that we need to do on that, on that, uh, on that front. I will say that the uh. Uh, the, the, the bylaws that I have typically looked at at this point in time, six hundred kilo-, uh, six hundred kilowatts is the lower threshold. And the upper threshold is typically ten megawatts.
Okay, and so, all I, I'll be only one of these I've ever seen that I recognize are the ones that are put in one forty-seven Williamsville, the solar field. Idea, maybe Bill knows, how many kilowatts that was? I know, is he still there? Okay, because there were. Basically, these units are like a semi-trailer size that where they put up solar field, but I don't know whether each of those containers was. Six hundred or twelve hundred or.
I think you bring up a very good point, and they, that is, is we need to also look at the solar field, since it is included in the uh, in this bylaw. Would also make sure that we are also including what that, what that facility typically has. Uh, and maybe, or potentially carve out that something, something that is more specific for so, for, for those that are solar fields. And again, something I'm willing to research, as long as I get help from somebody from this team.
Well, the other thing is, with the solar fields, they're big installations. So you might size it to the lot, you know?
They are, but the, the point, the point though is, is that uh, if we are, if we are qualifying something by, from a tier perspective, based on the kilowatt hours. Solar fields, their actual kilowatt hours may not be as large, and so we need to see what, what the actual capacity is for storage.
Okay, so just put upper limit as an issue.
Yep.
Need to be resolved, is it the number of issues? So. It's up to the board, we can, we could, so Bill, is this a bylaw that you would be interested in reviewing as a, from a professional basis? For us, for the planning board? Do you have time to do?
I think I need to bring in an electrical engineer to help me with the, the more technical aspects of it.
Do you want to? We can do, you know, the changes that Francois has, a few questions, send a copy to you. Do you want to not, just look it over and give us an estimate, or your services to review it and just consult with the electrical engineer? Because I don't feel like I have the technical ability to say this is a good thing or it's a bad thing or, right? Um, are we at that point, Francois, where?
I think it is, I think it is, and I think we have an opportunity to be here at the forefront. I, I do understand and know that. Uh, not only in the state of Massachusetts, but nationally. The battery energy storage system is becoming a very, very big issue because of the stability of the grid. Specifically when the renewable resources that we have for the generation of electricity are coming more online. And the impact that they have on the stability on the grid. And the battery energy storage systems basically provide that stability. And I think there's, for, it's a good opportunity for the town to be one of the very first, potentially one of the very first places that has a good comprehensive bylaw. Where we could utilize this here for.
Okay, so.
I will talk with Bill. Uh, Bill, I can, if, if, if the board is okay, I can share this uh, draft with him.
Nobody has a problem with that, David. So maybe by the fifteenth, get a quote back to us on what it would cost to have it reviewed and preliminary.
The eighteenth.
Yeah, if, if you're going to send Bill a copy of it, that's fine, but. Because we have this agreement tonight, but make sure you update the one, put it on the eighteenth, updated with those changes as well for our board.
A- absolutely. I will make sure that, that not only the board gets it, but also Bill gets an updated version. I have pretty much comprehensively done those changes already. There's a few obviously items that I need to include here.
And, and we've left it, it, but we're going to try to at least see if we can do an overlay, as an overlay.
I will, I will attempt to do this here. Uh, it, it, it is something that, uh, I, I can look at the map that we currently have from, I, I. I saw the G, the G, I don't know if it's G S I or G I S, uh, map. It's a G I S map and uh. That plus the uh, plus the zoning map that the town has, and try to come up with something that, uh, that I can utilize and probably add to it. But again, those would be, go ahead.
Uh, if you just give me a hand drawn sketch, I can produce a, an engineering map that, that the town can rely on.
I can, I can discuss this with you offline and see how, how to best do this here. Thank you.
I do think it would help us get it through, I really do.
I think so too, because it's very limited in scope. Yep.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we're.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I know it's a huge amount of work, because I even know. Sort of the issues involved in what I'm doing, and he's working with really difficult technical issues. Okay. So I want to proceed, I'm going to beg your patience tonight, it's going to be a long meeting. Is Fran, is he still there?
Yep.
Okay, we, I, we did, I did say he could come at seven thirty.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, so we've kept him waiting half an hour. Hello, Damon. Just give him a second. He's muted. Damon, you're muted, or do we mute him?
Nope.
I was just booting up.
Hey Damon, sorry we kept you waiting.
Oh, no.
You went to a very busy agenda, and I'm going to ask you to take no more than five or ten minutes, because I have an issue I have to get to.
All right, yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, so the floor is yours, what do you want to tell us?
Uh, basically, I want to try to revisit the uh, water limit per day. Um, that we had before. Uh, we drilled our well, so we now have some facts to work with. Um, and we also moved our well four hundred feet away from where it was the last time. Uh, so our well produces fifty gallons per minute, and we installed a fifteen gallon per minute well. So, you know, basically our well is producing more than we're going to be able to pump out. So basically, I wanted to see if we could get rid of that limit. And basically, I'm working with Peter Sham Pump who put our well in, and also our well pump in. And also uh, worked with Dawn Proventure, maybe you pronounce his last name from the last time with water. Um, and basically, um, you know, they had some suggestions on what we could do. Uh, you know, Peter Champ's pump, pump basically just kind of stopped it. You know, our, our pump, our well produces fifty gallons per minute. So we kind of thought just to, to leave it at that, that we, we can't even draw down our own well. Um, but Dawn, or uh, you know, had an idea that we could test, you know, Gordon's well, you know, if that would be an idea as well. Uh, the downside to that is Gordon would have to agree, and it sounds like his well is going to have to be shut off for four, uh, you know, twenty-four hours or so.
Have you approached him?
No, I've texted him, you know, I, I, he used to respond to my texts, he doesn't anymore, so, I could try him again. Um, but, you know, I figured maybe the, the town could approach him.
Well, Damon, and I never say no to anything, but I can never say yes based on a conversation, you know that, right? So you would have to, you would have to, you know, present a, uh. Again, and, you know, your data, right, from all these people, we'd have to set it up for a hearing, and you would have to submit some sort of formal request to modify it. Uh, so I don't know what you want from us tonight. I know that all of us were involved in that, and we all clearly remember Gordon. And the issue, so this is four hundred feet, you've moved it from its original, towards the D C R land?
To, uh, towards the street.
Towards the street.
Towards the street. So we're, uh, um, and I won't get too much into it, but the last time we talked with Gordon. You know, he said his neighbor's well was five thousand feet away from him, so we're at the same level. We're not really five thousand feet. But we line up to where his neighbor's well is, um, you know, and it's, it's about a thousand, twelve hundred feet away from him. So, um, well, the, the point I guess of coming tonight was just to talk to you, see what you guys thought. Dawn didn't want to, you know, write up some big proposal of, you know, doing a well test and, you know, everyone wanted to kind of hear what your thoughts were, what you wanted us to, how to proceed. And then we, you know, we would, not expecting anything tonight, I was just kind of throwing this out there.
I think we would also still want some kind of an upper limit, and I want to give Bill Murray a, a chance because. To respond, since he happens to be here tonight, about what we'd be looking for, if to entertain this, even entertain this idea. So, do you have an upper limit?
He's, he's probably the higher, the geo-tech, uh, geo hydro engineer. And what we're going to do is we're going to ask the geo hydro engineer to address. What his well is and what the quality of his well is. And if they're going to test Gordon's well, that means they're going to be running their well extensively. And monitoring the effect on Gordon's well, in all likelihood. Uh, I would suggest to him that if the other neighbor. Is amenable to it, he should monitor the other neighbors' well as in addition. So the two offsite wells are being monitored while Damon's well is being pumped hard. And that's going to tell the hydro geo engineer what the effect of this is. Because they're going to run Damon's well very hard, ineffective, it to affect the localized groundwater table. And see if it truly has an effect on Gordon or anybody else as well. And he'll be able to come back to us and say. This well has no effect, or this well has a marginal effect, or this well has a strong effect. And then he'll be able to tell us what a safe yieldful number will be, using engineering terms, not arbitrary.
Okay, Damon, uh, did you hear that?
Yep, yeah, I heard it.
Your expert could, I don't want to run up big fees here, but if he, but if Bill needs to. But if Bill needs to repeat that to your expert. You can get them in touch. I think there's some benefit to actually doing the study first and then coming to us. Cause we won't have anything to act on until that you got the date, the, you know, the proof, right?
Yeah, you know, it sounds uh, you know, almost exactly what Dawn had uh, you know, suggested doing about measuring the wells. Um it really just comes down to Gordon. You know, it's, it's gonna be if Gordon wants it or not.
Correct, and I do, I do believe you cannot compel him to do that. I mean, it's something that has to become voluntary, obviously, from him.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I just. I mean, if we're doing.
Interest, you know, because.
It isn't his interest.
It is.
Yeah.
The reality was, go ahead, sorry.
Well, David, just a reminder, Gordon doesn't use his drill well all the time. He goes with the shallow well in the spring, so keeping his drill well off for twenty-four hours or affecting his well for twenty-four hours. Shouldn't be a big deal in the spring or winter.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I just, I'll reach out to him and ask him. Um but you know, I would say if, if I was growing corn, you know, as far as I know, I can use ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine gallons of water a day. So, you know, until I have to ask for permission, so. To limit to five thousand is, you know, I, what scared me is after everything kinda got delayed when we started to.
You've frozen Damon, we can't hear you. Alright.
I'm, I'm just a little nervous, but yeah, no, I'll, I'll go back. I'll, I'll talk to Gordon. I know, I don't, I know I don't have much time.
I, I just wanna recognize Christopher here for a minute, cause I can't hear audible. Go ahead.
Well, it, it makes sense what, what Bill had said and, and what Damon's proposing because uh Damon's engineer went presenting for the, the special permit. Did comment that that would be the only way to know for sure what the actual impact of the well beyond the others was. Would be with that testing, so.
Okay.
Already heard that testimony, but that would be meaningful.
I remember, I do remember. So. Just to be very clear, Damon, we're not taking any action tonight. We're not telling you what we will or won't do. We're just trying to listen to you and telling, giving you a path forward, okay?
Alright, cool.
I would put an upper limit on it at some point. I mean, I think that we're just gonna require that, so think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, our, you know, our pump is only fifteen gallons per minute. So if you multiplied that out, I mean, we can only pump twenty thousand gallons, you know, at most. So, you know, that would, you know, and I don't think it would be kinda crazy to run your pump twenty-four hours a day and try to, I just don't think it would. You know, try to store that just continuously, but.
Put it in your submit, your submittal.
Yeah, alright, cool. So yeah, we'll get, we'll work through this. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you Damon. Thanks for waiting for us.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Next. Alright guys, I know I'm trying your patience. Uh Bill, we're gonna talk about in-law and accessory apartments. I don't think we need you at this point. But you can, welcome to stay if you want.
Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, so.
You'll do a great job.
Alright, so there's this form. It's called Blueprint for New Accessory Unit Bylaw. You should have one. You need it. It's homework. If you don't have it, I've got access. It was in Mallory's. Did she, do you have one?
I got it.
Okay. This is like, you may think this is crazy, but I'm gonna try to do this, alright? So here's, here's the story with this. Um. We um. I looked at two, you know, I sent, we, we were working on this for a long time. Originally, I sent you a, a bylaw about a year ago now and just to the select board. And I did all the benchmark towns, what they do for in-law apartments. So, but actually, there are two new ones that are good. That I, that this is, that these questions are modeled on, alright? And then we're gonna go through these questions. You're gonna take your little pen, you're gonna X the ones you disagree with or you wanna discuss. And if we get to the end, I'm gonna say, okay, these are the ones we agree on and narrow it down so I can put something into a draft. That's my theory, so. Eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. And it is a very. It's a very, I wanna say restrictive, I wanna say controlling bylaw. So, for example, if you wanna put a, a accessory dwelling unit. In, in Rutland. It is a rider on your deed, it's in the registry of deeds, it's, you know, they, they're, they're not, it's really tight, right? And then Anthols is the opposite end of the spectrum. It was written with affordable housing in mind by the chapel folks and it's all of four paragraphs. Right? So you've got the ten-page version and the four paragraph version. And I've gone through them. And these are the things, so if you just bear with me, I'll go through it. And if you can, it's, we can interrupt it, cause you know, I don't, I know I tend to dominate things, but if you could instead just mark the things. That you agree with, that you disagree with, and maybe we can pause. And if we, and then I promise uh, there won't, this, this meeting will not last more than. Two minutes after this is done, alright? Cause I, I hate two-hour meetings. Alright, so, okay, so. Here's my idea, that you would combine, you can follow along, combine what we presently have is an in-law and accessory, an in-law apartment and an accessory apartment. They're not really separate bylaws, they're actually separate definitions. And then they're allowed or not allowed. So I would combine them into one and we, we try to eliminate the word apartment. Cause it's a dwelling, basically. It's not an apartment. And the other thing I wanna point out is that, you know, there are two family houses are allowed as of right everywhere. But you have to have more frontage and more zoning, so this is distinct from that, okay? So. Okay, so, one thing I would include, and this is mostly both of these bylaws, uh Ethel and, and Rutland did, was include a, a purpose. Section in a bylaw. So this isn't, so this makes us think too, what is the purpose of allowing somebody to add an accessory dwelling unit? So they've come up with these four, which are, provide the old, older homeowners with the means of obtaining companionship, security. Secondary source of income, so the, you know, the elderly and let them live where they wanna live. A, B, develop housing units in single-family neighborhoods that are appropriate for households at a variety of stages of life. Okay, so. And this would also include, so this would pick up the nannies and so on, right? Whatever stage of life you're in, it's not just one stage that would need this. Provide housing units for people with disabilities. And then Rutland added, protect stability, property values and single-family residential character of the neighborhood by ensuring that the accessory dwelling units. Are installed only in owner-occupied homes. So they offered that as, you know, the people that are worried about expanding the uses. So the first question is, and you can check it or not, check it or circle it, but I would include a provision and I would put all three or four of those in, cause I think they're. They're legitimate and we tell the public we're actually interested in housing. So this in contrast, the third item, number three. And I don't know whether anybody would object to this, but what we would be eliminating, which we presently have in the Hubbard's and bylaws are. An in-law apartment requirement that the occupant, occupant of the in-law apartment must be a relative of the owner. I mean, we have people living in houses that aren't even relatives to them today, right? So, think about it. And, and it would also eliminate with accessory apartments, the way it reads is if it isn't built into the original structure. Then you can't build it in for five years. So I would do away with that, cause I think that's.
Five years or what?
Yeah, five, yeah. Well, I guess the, I, I don't know. I don't even know the sense of that. But if you build a house. And then you have a parent or a child that becomes disabled, you wanna wait five years before you can, you know? So, I don't think that's, I'm, this is, some of this is the low hanging fruit. Okay, so that's three. Four, allow accessory, uh, uh accessory dwelling units in all zoning districts. I don't think that's tough. We presently have a pyramid. Zoning where every, you know. Everything's allowed in residential is allowed in commercial and as you go up. Okay, so that's four. That's my only point there. Five, allow accessory dwelling units to be added only to single-family houses. That shouldn't be controversial, right? Six, allow only one accessory dwelling unit per single-family house. Or if it's new construction as part of the house. On a single-family house lot, right? So if you're gonna build a house.
Right.
Yeah, you get it, okay. S- uh seven, divide accessory dwelling units into exterior and interior and exterior units. This is what uh Rutland does, but other, I think other places as well. So the difference is an interior accessory dwelling unit. Is a unit that's built entirely within the existing walls of the scene, of the single-family house. Or if it's new construction, it's built as an integral part of that house. And then an exterior accessory dwelling unit are units that add to an existing. Single-family house either. By attaching a wing or, or above the garage, right? So you have the two. And this comes into play, why it's important is when you get to permitting, which is eight. The interior accessory dwelling unit, you would allow them to be built as of right. Uh as long as the house in law conforms to, it's a single-family house and it conforms to present zoning, right? The two hundred feet of frontage and the eight hundred. Square, uh. Eight thousand square feet of land and the setbacks. So you. You don't require them to come to us to get a special permit to do that. They can do that. With an exterior accessory dwelling units, then they need a special permit. They will come to us. The idea being that you're, you're, you're changing the street view, you're changing, right? And there's, and then, and then also. If you have an interior or exterior accessory dwelling unit on a lot that doesn't conform to present zoning, you know, it's pre-existing or whatever. Then you would, then it would acquire a special permit. Maybe we need to put special permit quite criteria in here too, but this is an overview. So then occupancy restrictions. Um and this is where you, we're getting a little more into the weeds. Um limit accessory dwelling unit occupancy to no more than X people. Rutland had four. Because it is what really changes when you say it doesn't have to be, right now it's controlled. It's gotta be a relative, right? And we're opening up to open the door to a little more how the world really is. The question is, what do you do about the Airbnb or so that's why C is there. You can mark it. Uh whether something you would go with or not go with. Uh nine, okay, so size restrictions, there's sort of two ways they're done in these bylaws. Um they usually don't let the accessory dwelling unit be as big or bigger than the original house, right? So. So they either say it has to be a percent, can't be bigger than a certain percent of the interior area of the existing house. Or, or occupy a percent, you know, bigger than a certain amount of the existing house. Or they limit the square footage. So. Rutland just says a thousand square feet, that's it. That's all the bigger accessory dwelling unit can be. We could do that. But other ones say uh something like this, where the interior, in, in interior, that's where we carved out of the inside of the house, right? Accessory unit may not exceed forty percent of the interior space in the existing home. Or forty percent of the interior space of a new house under construction.
I'd like to talk about both of those also.
Yeah, okay. This is just the ideas here. And then the exterior dwelling unit, again, that's the.
Add-on.
Add-on, may not exceed forty percent of the size of the pre-existing house, or if new construction, the primary dwelling unit. So it's. It wouldn't have to be the same number, forty percent or forty percent, but the idea being, you know, think of your house that's a hundred percent. And then the wing that's gonna occupy your, right? Should it be half the size of the original house? Can we gonna let it go up that high or? Again. Uh it's an issue and has to be worded right and you could just do what Rutland did. Can't exceed. Okay, alright, so then other restrictions. All of these are, you can X them out, we can add to them, but these are the ones that Rutland in particular did. Accessory dwelling unit cannot have more than two bedrooms. Both the primary house and the accessory, accessory dwelling unit must be served by one driveway. You don't put a separate driveway for it. See, Rutland was big on the parking situation. They have smaller lots, right? But two additional off-street parking spaces must be provided and not located in the front yard. Or on the, or on the driveway so as to block access, but you don't have to pave them. Um a septic system must be correctly sized to serve both the primary house and accessory dwelling unit. Um and an existing or revised septic plan has to be approved by the Board of Health prior to. Prior to, I didn't wanna say uh, yeah, building permit or special permit being issued, right? E would be combined primary house and accessory dwelling unit must be designed to maintain appearance of a single-family home. This was in the Rutland bylaw. Again, they're really hung up on the details, but for example, one main front door. Entrance and walk, this same siding and color. Windows, roofs, landscaping, to sort of tie it together. And I don't know how you'd actually write that. I'm trying to put the idea here, but. You might do it as just examples like that.
Right.
I've seen bylaws done that way. It, uh F, interior accessory dwelling units access doors must be on the side or rear of the house. No exterior staircases, right? So you, if you're gonna put, cover up a, put an accessory dwelling unit within an existing house, the entrance to it. As beside or back and it can't be, if it's the second floor, it can't be an exterior stairway. Which maybe. I don't, again, these are the Rutland people that are fussy. Cause honestly, you could put an exterior stairway, I would think up a. Or, 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 you know, if you're putting in a unit above a garage, I, I don't know, but anyway. What do you feel about it? And then the final one that I picked out of this was in exterior accessory dwelling units must be connected to. The pre-existing house or integrated. Into new construction through common walls or ceilings. A breezeway, you know, you just can't build a house and you've seen those. Yeah, is insufficient. And um a detached unit may be built above a pre-existing garage or permitted as part of a new garage. But in all cases, the above size limit would apply. Okay, so this would, this is my outline that I'd like to try to draft up. For consideration, and maybe not a hearing yet, but one more trip through on the eighteen. So would you tell me about it? I'll start with Bill. No, and Francois, I know you're there. Okay, Bill, what, what bugs you about it?
Uh I liked the first section. I didn't like on the number three. Three A and B I didn't like, and like four.
Wait, three, you, you would keep the resident occupant? That, that the occupant has to be, you know, a relative?
You're saying here eliminate.
Eliminate.
Right. So I don't like those. I wanna get rid of those, yes.
Yeah, so you agree with this, eliminate them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have the X's there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
I agree with four. Five and six. Seven, I had a question about the A and B and, you know, I would word it.
Interior accessory dwelling unit, units built entirely within existing single-family house. Or if new construction, an integral part of the house. Maybe that doesn't make sense, the integral part, but. Maybe that doesn't make sense, the integral part, but. I guess what I'm thinking there is. My primary reason in doing this is to determine when you have to come get a special permit and when the plant, when the. When's Roland RZE, you know, the building inspector would be just allowed to permit it. Right now, he's allowed to permit. The accessory units in a new building that's being built. And it seems to me if you're putting in an old house. It's not going to change the appearance from the road. Why why involve us? Septic system works and so that was my thinking. There is, of course, a lot of these units that are hybrid units where they carve a piece out and stick a, you know, a new, yeah.
Right.
Which would have to count as an exterior accessory because it changes the exterior. I could do better with the wording, but the concept.
Include everybody else's we're going through would that be easier?
Okay, we'll do we'll stop. Stop right there. Problems, we're looking at one through seven. Any problems with one through seven? Okay. Christopher's good. Erica? No, John? John's asleep.
John, you awake?
No, I'm good.
Francois, one through seven.
I apologize, but I've been trying to get somebody's attention that this document that you are reviewing at this point in time is not available to me.
Oh, it is, though. It's posted. Posted in documents.
I am in the documents directory and at this point in time, I'm not seeing it. Cause I'm in my drive. I'm sorry, I'm in the shared drives. I'm in the planning board. I'm the one for November the fourth.
Hang on, we're gonna fix you up.
It's in the folder for the meeting, not the folder for the bylaws.
It's in the meeting folder. Did you hear that, Francois? Under files.
I'm sorry, under the twenty twenty one meetings directory.
Fourth files.
There's only there's only folders here that I have access to.
Click the folder and it's listed under it.
If you scroll down, there should be.
Yeah, scroll down a little bit.
I'm on the very bottom and all I have at the very bottom is the April one twenty twenty one meeting notes.
All right, I moved into bylaw updates then.
Let me go there.
I know. Can you see it now?
There is a. Is that the blueprint blueprint?
Yes, the blueprint.
Hey, I have it now. Thank you.
Well, Francois, look through one through seven. We'll give you a minute.
I will at this point in time apologize, but it's not wasn't available to me. Thank you.
No, no, sorry. We should have picked it up earlier. I didn't see.
Listening, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
You can you can add in your one through seven. I'm gonna have Bill go on. We're gonna do them one by one now, but I'll come back to you for one through seven.
Well, I think we're to eight now.
Eight, okay, so eight permitting. So my scheme is. Isn't my scheme, it's what these other bylaws are doing too, but allow the interior unit to be built as of right if the lot conforms to zoning. And the exterior dwelling unit by special permit. And both interior and exterior dwelling units would require a special permit if it's a nonconforming lot. Anybody have a problem with that?
So if somebody had a unconforming house lot.
Yep.
Grandfathered into today's zoning, if they wanted to do it into their home, they couldn't do it. If they had enough room.
Right. Because the theory would be that. I mean, I could change that.
I don't know if I agree with that. Cause if the home's big enough to do it.
Even if it's on a very tiny lot?
Doesn't matter.
Well, they're not all very tiny lots. So for example, I live on a lot that's nonconforming. But it's not tiny. It's it's over an acre.
Okay, so you want all all of. I'm just have to use the setbacks.
Interior accessory.
Just take the exterior accessory dwelling units, then it would be all exterior dwelling, exterior dwelling.
You'll just write special permit.
Do you want to allow exterior accessory dwelling units on conforming lots?
Yeah.
Without a special permit?
Kind of deal with it on your C to read C. What do you think of that?
Yeah, because it'd be by a special permit then.
So is that okay? And just get it get rid of A? Cause we're gonna deal, we're gonna deal with them all.
A A is gonna allow. A allows interior units in conconforming lots. Okay, without without unconforming lots. So we could say interior units. Allowed whether it's a conforming lot or not. If you want to do that.
Can I ask what can I ask a question on that one very specifically? If if the if the structure already exists. And it's just being converted into a. In into an accessory dwelling. Does that require a special permit?
Yeah, it would under the framework that's there.
Under this, if it was, it would if it's a nonconforming lot, if it's not a two acre.
No, no, i- if it is a conforming lot. Right?
If it is a conforming lot, no special permit.
No, no, yeah, I'm really talking about an exterior. Accessory dwelling unit, right? And I'm coming up with the example of, I mean, I have a house. I have, I have, I have, I have a detached two dark two door garage above which there are. There there's 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 a unit.
Yeah.
And I've always had this issue where I've always said, that's my in-law apartment, and I continually get knocked down by saying, nope. You have a multifamily property. And may be taxed as such.
Specifically specifically allow it, but. But this is an, I mean, a lot of.
Where I'm going with this here is is that now in order to be able to make it. An accessory dwelling, which is what I've always stated it has to be. And I'm trying to make this about me. I'm just saying potentially other people in town. Now this will require a special permit.
Okay. So here's a question for the board. If you had, if you wanted to put an exterior dwelling unit onto your house. And you had two hundred in it, you had a conforming lot with two hundred feet of frontage and eighty thousand square feet. Is there any reason to make them come to the planning board for a special permit for that?
No, they have to go through the building.
Or should the building inspector just be allowed to do that on his own if the lot conforms?
If it conforms, I I agree, they don't know.
Well. I think it's. I think it's something different if we're talking about something that's preexisting. So.
Exactly, it's a preexisting. We're not talking about a new construction.
Yeah, so like the situation Francois was talking about, I'm sure it's actually pretty common in town because.
Precisely.
Others in town with space that's clearly not just storage above them. Yeah, so those those places. It it literally already exists. Is there like an amnesty waving for the ones that are.
That would only be effective going forward. All zoning laws that way, but but maybe it's something we don't need to do. We don't. The planning board doesn't need more work.
Or do we need more controls or enough control?
But the question is, would you?
Well, what's the the question is, is what's the reason for the special permit here, right?
Yeah.
Especially if there's something that is preexisting and has been as has has been an existent and potentially even grandfathered. And all we're doing is is we are basically reclassifying something as a accessory dwelling.
Well. The short answer to your question is that right now. You would need a special permit to get accessory dwelling unit.
Based on what I'm seeing here, yes.
No, I mean, and under our present bylaws as they exist. So do you want to continue that onward or do we want to loosen it up and say, hey, if you got two acres? And you do this other stuff, you know, the driveway and the septic and all the rest of it, you don't need to come to the planning board.
Yeah, cause B eight B says allow exterior. Allow exterior accessory dwelling units only by special permit.
But do you want to?
Last case, I'd say, no, we we don't need to do that.
I think we.
And again, I just want to be very stating it very clear here in public. This is not about me. This is about this is about the the town. And other people who are found finding themselves in the exact same situation.
We we have a choice. The choice is a. If you have a conforming lot, whether. You need a special permit in order to add an exterior accessory dwelling unit. Yes or no?
I still think we there. There's two questions there. So for the preexisting ones, like there, there are people who have these there. They either didn't put a garage in, or rather, they didn't put a bathroom in, or they didn't put in a stove. So it didn't become an apartment, but they're kind of preplumbed and waiting for it.
Well, well, they have.
What would they?
They would have to come to us if it's not already. If they need a building permit, right, to finish it, then they gotta come to us if we leave special permit required. But would also have to meet the setbacks, right? So it's not just frontage and areas.
Yeah, but they they would already be existing though, with the exception of just a stove installation.
Well, and we'd probably approve it, right?
But do we want to be approving the approving stove installation?
It would still have to go through the building inspector's.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't make approval of plumbing and all that. It still has to go through that other process. Or are we requiring too much process?
I'm only writing a draft here, guys.
I know.
The public will weigh in.
Are we asking for too much process here? That's that's.
I'm willing.
I always like to limit control, but limit the process.
Well, just having the the conversion of preexisting ones, maybe that makes sense to just do. Through. The the building inspector commissioner. And that that shouldn't be through a special permit. If the building literally exists already. There's already even a bathroom in it, and they just need to put a stove in it and call it an accessory unit. But by all other intents and purposes, it already exists in this world.
Correct.
Okay, well, let's leave it the way that that an exterior unit where you're really adding a building on requires a special for the neighbors will care. They'll see it. All right, all right, I'm gonna leave it this way, but again, nothing set in stone. This is just directions on how to draft this. Okay, so. So Francois, though, your point is taken. About existing units, we're gonna have to be, but they're grandfathered by right under the mass general law. Anything that existed prior to the passage of a new zoning bylaw.
Not for occupancy if they don't already have the stove.
But he's right. If you didn't, if you hadn't put your toilet in yet and you need to put the bathroom up there, you'd be stuck.
Which is a different situation, but I do know that there's many of these instances where people already have a kitchen. They have already. All of facilities and they have a bathroom and and so forth. The town has simply said, nope, that's not considered an accessory or an in-law apartment. This is now considered a multifamily dwelling. I mean, again, I don't want to belabor this here, but it's just.
Because we have halfway for accessory units, so they you have to call it something.
Right.
I see. He says it's a way around our existing restrictions is the problem. Because our existing are the only way you can do it right now is put it in a structure that exists.
I don't think they're gonna gonna come up with a good solution to this tonight, but I think it is.
But this would help if you allow it to be. Yeah, okay, all right, all right, we need to go. I just want to get another. You know, this is a big job and this needs to be done. So let's go on occupancy restrictions for people. Anybody think that's too many or too few?
I don't know if we should get into numbers. Cause that's all limited by code already in place by the plumbing and the building inspector's codes. You can only have so many bedrooms added on because of septic and everything else. I don't think we need to get into that. So I had my grandkids over and I have a one bedroom and I let them sleep there for that. I'll send or let him stay for a weekend or a week if something happens. Down on violation of these laws. I don't. Too constrictive in there.
Yeah, sort of health cutoffs of. Those in on how many people can be in a bedroom. So do you do you want to limit? So there's a couple of ways they do this. You got the four people in some of the bylaws, right? And then you've got the, what was the other one? About to limit the number of bedrooms. But the bedrooms, two bedrooms. I think there's some, I think that's kind of reasonable, two bedrooms limits personally, but.
Well, I I think when you start talking about a property that's three or four bedrooms, you are talking about a multi family.
Right.
Don't we have, don't we have two bedrooms in here?
Cause the septic going probably so much.
Yeah, two bedrooms were already in there somewhere.
Okay, so we'll take the four people out and leave the two bedrooms in. That everybody agree with?
It's already listed two bedrooms somewhere else.
It is somewhere. It is in here somewhere.
The other restrictions.
Oh, other restrictions. All right, so instead of instead of limiting people that can live there, we're gonna need, we're gonna limit that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now this resident, the residents, the the theory is that this goes up to this fourth. Protect the stability, property values and so forth. You don't want. The difference, the primary difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a two family is that the owner must live there. And occupy. One or the other. Right, that's distinguishes it right from rental units that are out there.
Do we do we even really have to stipulate how many months a year? Some people come up for a month and then they go back. Or how are you gonna enforce that? Does it make any sense to put something in?
Well, yeah, how are you gonna know?
Nobody's gonna know. Why put it in there?
Well, you can't put in, you you do want to put because. One of the concepts of. An accessory dwelling unit is it is an owner occupied house. It isn't somebody that leaves and occupies and rents both his house and then the unit separately. So that's the problem is it's the concept. You could say pri- and you could say primary residence, but then that also defeats the the people that want to be the snowbirds. So that's why I put in.
Can we cut it down from five to two or just make the number small in case? It's probably not gonna ever be enforced.
I just remind the board that, I mean, let's look at the purpose here. The purpose is really for older homeowners. It is also for housing for individuals who have disabilities and 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 so forth. So I think. In my opinion, if we are opening this up for somebody who's just there for a month and then just. Opens it up like that, I think we're really not serving the spirit of this bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, if you if you just said must be occupied as a is a principal residence, because some people say I, you know, it does. It does open them up. I don't know, four months. I can write it is it's six months in Rutland, but I have a problem with six months because I don't think it's practical.
Too much control.
Yeah, five months, I think, is is more reasonable than six.
Yeah.
The average snowbird.
But again, you're not gonna be able to improve it, so it's. We're not gonna have the. I'm assuming.
But if the person that really moves out and hasn't lived there in two years and somebody else is renting it, you can go after them.
Yeah.
Or the show, well, I was there last, I was there for Thanksgiving last year, you know, it's.
Or both of them end up listed on Airbnb year round.
All all around the clock. Yeah, anyway, all right, so. We're gonna go with two bedrooms. We're gonna leave it with the four months size. Okay, so I know EDC is gonna have a problem probably with not allowing it to just be added on as a moneymaker as a, I mean, they're you're gonna see him on Airbnb anyway, but. But you can't build it as a. Is like essentially a, you know, hotel unit.
Right.
You gotta be, so that's why. That's why this sentence is there. D, clearly Rutland was not willing to go with Ethels. Anything goes, put a unit in, we need housing and we're allowed, people should be able to make money.
Right.
They wanted to protect that. So. That's kind of a compromise. All right, well, let's let it stay for the moment for my final draft here and then size restrictions. You want anybody in favor of the square feet? It'd be really easy, but it would be kind of.
I don't know. I don't know.
You shouldn't put a thousand square foot. I mean, some houses in town are only fifteen hundred square feet, right? So you're gonna put a thousand square foot unit to be. So that's why it's sort of a percent makes sense to me.
And you can do weird things by bedroom. By bedroom listing. It's like my house is technically only a two bedroom and it's. Large. So like you could have a two bedroom house and still have it be thirty eight hundred, four thousand square feet.
Right.
Anybody, well, is the forty percent reasonable?
I don't know. I I'm not sure yet.
All right.
I'd like to think about it a little more.
For the sake of drafting, it's not one of those things that this has to go.
Trying to think about how big a thousand, like a thousand square foot apartment is.
Well, if you got a thousand square foot house, you're gonna add a thousand square. Foot onto it.
You can only own forty percent.
You would only be able to four hundred.
Unless we said a thousand.
Unless you said a thousand, yeah. That's why I percentage, but percentages are kind of.
How many thousand square foot houses are there?
Oh, there's a ton of cottages, all those little. There are. Actually, the people here tonight, that root house isn't much bigger than that.
If you have.
It's a ranch. It's got like two bedrooms.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna leave the forty percent in. I'm not gonna put the thousand square feet. You can think about it. Nothing's gonna be decided tonight in the final way. Restrictions.
Definitely not two hours into a meeting.
Okay, any of the restrictions you absolutely think I should take out? There's oh, there's the two bedrooms. We're gonna leave that.
What about the ownership as a trust before we move off of those ones? Because a lot of people have done Medicaid planning. And the house is owned by whatever family trust. So if you have a house owned by a family trust, that that shouldn't stop you from.
Or we could, you could say that, or if owned by a family trust.
Or.
Occupied by.
Does it have to be?
Beneficiary of.
Yeah.
I can do that.
That'd be a reasonable way to do it.
Of course, I won't be able to read my handwriting. Okay, anything?
Can I ask for clarification on ten H? It says exterior, I'm sorry, exterior accessory dwelling units must be connected to a preexisting house?
Yes, but read the second sentence. Meaning you can't.
Maybe.
So it shouldn't be like a separate cottage in the backyard. It shouldn't be. Or two houses connected by just a breezeway, which you see. I know there's some of those on Pleasant Street going in Worcester. That it should share a ceiling or a common wall, but then my last sentence is a detached unit may be built above. That it should share a ceiling or a common wall, but then my last sentence is a detached unit may be built above a pre-existing garage or permitted as part of a new garage. So people aren't gonna be able to bu, to build accessory uses as cottages in their backyard.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what that means. Okay, no exterior staircase, uh. Access doors, I think of the, I think that's fair to put them in the side and for interior units, the new. But a lot of houses do have.
Exterior staircase. So if you got a garage and you put a staircase on the side of it or in the back, you can't do that.
Do you want me to make an exclusion for garage units?
Oh, even a building in the back, if I put one in the back of my house, you can't see it from the road, why does that matter?
And what about a, a secondary egress if you're talking about a garage apartment, so.
You need two ways.
Yeah, so like a lot of the ones in, that I've seen in town, yeah, they do have an internal staircase, but. That's not good enough, it, it, it has that two points of egress.
You wanna say if, if there's an exterior case, staircase must be limited to the back of the building?
Do we even want to stipulate that? I don't even.
You don't, you don't, you don't really want to see people putting an exterior stairway in front of their house.
I don't know how much of an issue it is in Hubbardston.
Would that be?
We're not, like, parcel, 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 parcel.
Yeah, but if you're, right.
And to, to the same point with the, um, parking spaces on the driveway. Most people, a fairly large percentage of town has driveways that are a hundred feet plus. So adding two more parking spaces to the driveway.
Okay, what could, you know, I thought of a way to change that after I wrote it, which was. Two additional off-street parking spaces must be provided, uh, which do, which when used do not block. The driveway.
Yeah, cause I can see how in towns where people didn't have long driveways, that would be an issue because people would suddenly have these very large wide driveways or half of the front yard would be paved. But that's not a problem.
Well, if we just put the.
What if we just say you can't park on the street? Something like that.
Off-street mark, off-street parking must be provided for two vehicles. And can't be located in the front yard, would that be better? I could do that.
I think there's lots where the drive, the whole driveway is in the front yard. But it, but it doesn't matter because it's still two hundred yard, two hundred feet off the street, so.
Or two cars not located. Well, you don't want them in the front yard though. In front yard, I mean, you could limit that, you could say if. Not limited in. And, and not in front yard setback.
Yeah.
And that would be a hundred feet off, or seventy-five feet.
Yeah, that would, that would make more sense.
Front yard setback, okay. Required front yard setback. And then with, then with special permits, you can alter some of those things.
Right.
Right, and so, so the person, um. The septic system, that's a no-brainer, but you want to put it in here so people. Go there first, right, if they gotta redo the septic system. Okay, and I will try to do something with the, maintain the appearance of a single family house, but it might be, I think that was what it said, but some examples.
Right.
I think would be in order, for example. You know, if somebody said, well, I'm doing this new unit and I'm going for, who is that famous architect of that look where part of my house is brick and part of it's wood? I mean, you know, I'm not trying to prevent that, but you're trying to prevent it from being. You know, somebody puts a new unit on and they don't bother to try to tie it together and it, alright. Okay, alright, I've got enough to work for, I'm gonna give this a try. You will have a second bite of the apple. Um, in terms of fixing it up, uh. Oh boy, I've got fifty, sixty seconds here, let's see what was. Well, he's like, my kids are dying, let me go on.
My mom's probably dying, my kids, my kids are.
No, actually, I don't have much, really. I just wanted to tell you that I got this letter today, Mallory sent it to me. Uh, we got a letter saying they're gonna sell the solar field and I do not know the one, uh, the big one on Williamsville, one forty-seven.
Is that the one across from Purners?
It's the one with the solar, you, the battery operator.
Because the one, I'm not sure, I can't think of which is which now, but the one across from Purners, they still can't use it because they can't. Get the power they need to run it.
I just got it, Darryl just did his final sign-off and so did the building inspector.
But when they did the.
Really?
For one forty-seven, I don't know which one is Purners.
The one that's right across from Purners' house?
I don't know which one that one is.
Well, this issue is.
They had to shut the other one off. So they can get enough power to run there.
I know Darryl said there was some work that needed to be done, but it's all been signed off on.
National Grid has, has never launched to activate the power, so we get it up there.
Which is the one, I thought it said here, I think it's at one forty-seven. It's one, one forty-seven is the big one, that we had the big issue over the ba, battery storages. Anyway, they want to know. They're gonna sell it, they have a right to sell it, they want to know about the bond and I don't know the answer to that.
I said, shout it off to Sandy and the accountant as well, because I don't know.
Okay, can you send it to Bill? Bill will know, he deals with these. Um, and I also wanted to tell everybody that the master plan, you, did you see the chapter was done? Really good, um, so the next, that's gonna be up for approval at down, at annual town meeting, master plan, that's their goal. So we're gonna have to have some hearing times for people to. Come in and comment on it, in addition to all other plateful of stuff between now and then. And right after the first of the year, they're gonna assemble a team for the implementation chapter, a local team, so if you want to be part of that. Be the planning board delegate, you know, I'd be happy to sign you up. Um, and. Oh, Carolyn Reed, there are a bunch of work dates that you can sign up if you want to volunteer a day or half a day at Habitat for Humanity Building House. So they're on the list, which is in the agenda, those dates and.
It's on the agenda, I didn't see that.
It's, uh, well, it's on, it's on the agenda is habitats in the documents.
Oh.
From Habitat, is a list of days. And if you want to build camaraderie and have a planning board working day, if a group wants to come out, let me know, you know, I'd be willing to do it, you could bring your spouse.
What is it, November?
Any of these dates, these are all dates that are, they're listed. Yeah, there are some Saturdays.
No, there isn't.
Oh, I think she's, wasn't Saturdays coming more towards like landscape times, all that good stuff?
Might be towards the end. Would you be willing to work on a Saturday if we have one?
Okay, cause right now it can't work weekday.
Okay, well, it's something to keep in mind, she's not.
No, I'd love to go home.
I think it would be a nice gesture if we had one day, we, you know, as many of us could go down there.
It'd be fun.
And that's it. Okay, I'll take a moment to adjourn.
Before we turn, real quick from the E D C, um. The, the zoning overlay, um, that is moving forward. We did have the meeting with, uh, with Jessica from the Regional Planning Authority. Uh, she was gonna be reaching back out to the E D C for, um, for some questions to get the process started. I haven't seen any of those yet, so I don't know what the status of it is, but at some point, the planning board is gonna need to be more involved in that process. And that's gonna be something else that potentially get added to the next town meeting if it's done in time. Um, there was also, there wasn't any vote on it, but there was, uh, somewhat of a consensus on the board that the, um. The E D C, separate of the planning board, is gonna hold off on the accessory use by law, and so they got some of the feedback from the overlay work.
That, that makes sense.
Actually, that does take some of the pressure off. Do you want me, I'm writing to the select board to say articles on the agenda. I don't have to, I can say, uh, you reported that the E D C might have this town, it's called the Town Center Overlay Zone. By law, complete in time, alright, I will do that.
And I, I, I personally love the idea of the agricultural accessory use by law because obviously it's something that people are already doing.
And it's a right-to-find community.
Yeah, so I, I hope that that makes it.
Bill's on your side a hundred percent. He said if I were gonna rework that town center district and fit more stuff in it with all the problems it has, I would certainly go for the. The farm by law first, because it's gonna generate more business.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, motion to adjourn?
Chris made it.
Chris made it?
I'll second it.
Bill seconded it, not debatable, all in favor, aye.
You look great, man.
Thank you.